Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for showing up to another wonderful event. We'd like to get the meeting started at 4:01. Can we start off with a roll call, please?
In order to help assure compliance with the Brown Act and in order to make the board meetings more effective and more efficient, trustees will speak only when recognized and trustees who speak on a topic other than the agenda item currently under consideration will be out of order. Vice President Stevens?
Present.
Clerk Cologne?
Present.
Trustee De Nair?
Present.
Trustee Mendez?
Present.
Trustee Rico?
Present.
Trustee Zulueta?
Present.
Student Representative Abby Welker.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag Led by President Angel Inforz. We're gonna move on to 1.4, Oral Suggestions and Comments from the Community Regarding the Agenda Items. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. Trustees, we have one common card regarding I, two common cards regarding item 2.1. First common card is from Ms. Felice Bryson Perez.
Good evening. I just wanted to address the comparison from last year to this year. Regarding the Esser Funds and the communication of what we need to do for our students to help what the learning trajectory and the learning loss that has happened because of COVID. And those of you that were here last year could remember the fact that our language in our contract is old and we needed to do some changes to make summer school more enrichment and things like that, which we did the prior year. But those that were in negotiations stopped us last year from doing that and we lost a lot of students to participate in the summer school programs. So what we appreciate is Mr. Beederman and Ms. Pronitis and Dr. Ramirez meeting with STA and teachers to discuss what things we can do for enrichment and for summer school. And then in future conversations, talking about LCAP and where that money can be used from the Esser Funds. So I just wanted to let you know of the difference that we're seeing in the communication going forward. But some of the things do take process for an MOU and that because it could be something different that our language in our contract isn't up to date on to do. So just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Trustees, this concludes public comments for item 2.1 on the Special Board Study Session Agenda. Thank you.
Moving on to item 2.1, General Business Services Information and Esser Funding and the Allowable Uses of These Funds by Ms. Joanne Wadis, Intrum Chief Business Official and Dr. Susana Ramirez, Intrum Assistant Superintendent, Educational Services Department.
Joanne, do you have copies of the presentation for the board members? Do we have? Yes, please. Some of us didn't get them, so she's bringing some up.
Abby, I mean, next slide. Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Clerk, Trustees and Community. Welcome to Business Services. Tonight is a, is our first session of many, many that will inform you of the daily operations of Business Services. I have provided each of you with a binder and each session you will receive new handouts that will, sorry, new handout with resources for different departments within Business Services such as budget, purchasing, accounting, payroll and risk. Tonight I will be discussing budget. I will, I will be introducing our budget team, providing general information, helpful hints, the steps taken in budget development, first interim and second interim, budget monitoring, resource, object codes, grant proposal, fiscal reports. Each board study session will also include one of the different funding sources Stockton Unified receives. Tonight's funding will be, but tonight's funding we will be discussing is Esser. Do you want me? Next slide. All funding sources have a staff member assigned to monitor that budget. I would like to introduce our budget staff. Willie Gutierrez, Fiscal Director. Victoria Aguilar, Intern Budget Manager. Budget Assistant Erica Demus, she's not here today, she had a family emergency, so she couldn't be here today. Our other budget assistant is Jessica Serrano. Our Budget Analyst Maria Lopez. Craig Chilson. Rebecca Sanchez. And Maravik Fortes. These individuals are sites and departments' best friends and in Business Services and the best resource for any questions regarding personal authorizations, EPAs, allowable expenses, grants, expense reports, invoice and budget alignment. Next slide. General Information. Budget consists of anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures. Budget is ever-changing due to many variables. Adjustments may be needed for enrollment, attendance, salary settlements, benefit changes, grant amendments, free reduced programs and many more. It is important budgets are reviewed on a regular basis. Next slide. Budget Development. Budget Development, we start looking at the next year, next fiscal year budget once the January Governor Budget is released. At the release, we receive information regarding COLA, any changes, good or bad, in different funding sources and possible changes that will affect our expenditures. In February, staffing reports are sent out to sites and returned to Business Department. This allows us to start working on salary changes for the upcoming year. In March, budget development packets are provided to sites and departments to review, to review revenue and expenditures. Sites and departments can always reach out to their best friend in the Budget Department for assistance. Adjustments may be needed for enrollment, attendance, local control funding formula, LCFF, changes, COLA, personnel and program site needs. Next slide. Each budget should be developed with the most up-to-date information and comply with regulations and compliance of our grantor. Revenue and budget developments are LCFF, which is attendance-based, federal grants such as Title I, Title II Esser, state programs such as special ed and lottery, local revenue such as interest and donations. Next slide. Expenditures included in budget development are projected based on grant requirements and program and site needs. Any supporting document should be included in the budget development packages such as award letters, MOUs, contracts, personnel change, enrollment or ADA projection. Sites and departments are always encouraged to reach out to their assigned budget staff for assistance. It is important for these packages, these packages are returned to Business Services by March 30th to allow us time to, to complete the process for the adopted budget which needs to be approved by the board July 1st, before July 1st. First and Second Interim. We are required to file two interim reports during a fiscal year on the status of the district's financial health. Both interim report provide up-to-date funding based on state and federal regulations. First interim is the first amended budget as of October 31st and approved by the board by December 15th. Budgets are reviewed with up, up-to-date budget changes per program and sites requests. These changes should be submitted no later than October to be included in this reporting period. Second interim is the second amended budget as of January 31st and approved by the board by March 15th. The changes should be submitted no later than mid-January to be included in this reporting period. Budget Development, First Interim and Second Interim are sent to San Juanquin County Office of Education after board approval. Budget Monitoring. It is important for sites and departments to work with their assigned budget staff to review revenue and expenses to ensure they are in balance and in compliance with regulations and guidelines. Sites and departments' financial reports are always available at any time and may be requested from the budget staff. Miscellaneous Tips. There are 12 different funds we monitor that are related to different programs. They are segregated for the purpose of carrying on specific activities, attaining certain, certain activities or attaining certain objectives with special regulations, restrictions or limitations. The five, the five different funds we monitor daily are Fund One, which is general fund, Fund Nine Charter Fund, Fund 11 Adult Education, Fund 12 Child Development, Early Childhood and Fund 13 Food Servicing. Resource Codes. Resource Codes allows us to account separately for activities funded with different revenue. Some revenues have restrictions on how the funds are spent and have financial reporting or special accounting requirements. The different resource codes are from 0 to 1, 999 is unrestricted revenue, 2,000 to 2,99 is restricted revenue, 3,000 to 5,99 is federal revenue, 6,000 to 7,000 is restricted state revenue and 9,000 to 9,99 is local restricted revenue. There's a list of resources in your binder for reference. This helps us identify which funding we have and it tells you which is restricted and which is unrestricted and if it's state-related or if it's federal-related. Object Codes. Object Codes identify revenue and expenditures. Revenue is classified by the general source and type of revenue. Expenditures are classified according to the type of items purchased or services obtained. Object Codes also classify balance sheet accounts as assets, liabilities or fund balance. Above is the list of common object codes we use. 8,000 to 8,99, 8,000 to 8,099 is LCF revenue. 81, 100 to 8,299 is federal revenue. 8,300 to 8,599 is state revenue and 8,689 to 8,699 is other local revenue. These items will identify the revenue that's coming in. For expenses, we use 1,000 to identify certificated positions, 2,000 to identify classified positions, 3,000 to identify benefits, 4,000 to identify material supplies, 5,000 for services and other operating expenditures, 6,000 for capital outlay and 7,000 for outgoing expenses such as indirect. And there's also a reference sheet in your binder for, for all the different object codes we use. Grant Proposal Submission. All grant proposal budget information must be checked and approved by the Business Department. Sites and departments must work with their assigned budget staff to ensure all proposed expenditures are correct and in compliance with the grant. Items that are reviewed are the terms of the grant, salary and benefit project projections, material and supplies, operating expenditures, contracted services, matching requirements if any, and indirect. It is important to review these items to ensure the district can meet the requirement. So matching is really important that when we do a grant, because sometimes our grants will have a matching that's required and, but you can't sometimes double up that match. So if we're using some general fund to match one funding, we can't, sometimes we can't use it. So it's always good that we're reviewing these reports when they submit any grants to make sure we're not doing that and that we're following the rules and we're in compliance. Signatures of Fiscal Reports. All budget and expenditure reports are reviewed by the Budget Manager and signed by the Director of Fiscal Services and the Chief Business Official. It is important for sites and departments not to wait until the day is, until the day the report is due to contact the Business Department for signature. The Business Department needs five working days to review the information before signing. So what we do is we, we pull up reports on our system and make sure whatever we're reporting as our expenditure matches what's in the system. Because we want to make sure that we, if any expenditure reports, we're gonna actually get reimbursed from that if it's a reimbursement grant. So that's why it's always important for us to review it and we need the time to do it so we can actually make sure it's accurate. So that's why we're asking for five X, five days before we'll sign off on it. And then once the signature is received, the reports are submitted to CD. Esser Funds. Esser Funds are to help prepare, prevent and respond to COVID. Stockton Unified's allocation for Esser One was $15,82,312. The allocation has been all spent. Esser Two allocation was $69,730,273. We currently have a remaining balance of $25,287,984. That needs to be spent by 9/32/2023. Esser Three allocation is $156,749,550. Esser Three required a plan and all funds must be done by 9/32/2024. We, we still have 153 million to spend. Dr. Ramirez will be discussing the requirements of Esser.
Good evening, Board President Flores, Vice President Stevens, Superintendent Dr. Miller, Board Trustees and Stockton Community. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Can we get it in there? Let's try this again. Good evening, Board President Flores, Vice President Stevens, Superintendent Dr. Miller, Board Trustees and Stockton Community. My name is Susana Ramirez and I'm here this evening to provide you with an update on the Stockton Unified School District Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Allocation, otherwise known as Esser Funds. Before I begin, I want to preface by stating that in retrospect and given much reflection, there is room to continue building elements of supports into the October 2021 School Board Approved Plan. In addition, I would like to share that administration will be submitting an amendment to balance allocations to ensure we meet required California Department of Education mandates. Moving forward, administration will work to embed best practices throughout the planning and monitoring of the School Board Approved Activities and allocations. What that means is that the district's systems will be continuously assessed and potentially adjusted to build coherence and alignment in order to implement supports outlined in the plan. District Administration will continue to collaborate cross-departmentally, continue ongoing conversations with our union leader partners and continue to elicit feedback from district staff and parents. With that said, many of us here tonight might have heard the old adage, money doesn't grow on trees. However, I feel that for tonight's presentation, the analogy of a giving tree is not only relevant but appropriate. Tonight, our district will further acknowledge and learn more about a funding stream that may sometimes feel like a giving tree. However, we must remember much monitoring and care is necessary in order to cultivate positive results, much like a sapling. We must be good stewards of all of our budgets and take good care of it, of them. And that doesn't mean we don't spend it, but rather it means there's an intention and a carefulness to how we utilize these funds to address the needs of all of our students and families. With that said, you each have been given a small token this evening, a sapling and a giving tree book that sits in front of you as a gentle reminder of our joint responsibility in service of not only our students but to the community at large. Next slide, please. The four objectives for tonight's presentation are. Hang on, can you go back? The, sorry. Our four objectives for tonight's presentation are: Create common understanding of the three types of Esser Funds. Create common understanding of the allowable uses of the Esser Funds. Provide an update on the expanded categories of Esser One, Two and Three Funds and provide updates on the department allocations and qualitative themes for the use of Esser Three Funds. Next slide, please. I want to further ground us in the conversation by reading our district vision and mission statements that help focus and guide the amazing work that happens in our district every day. Our USD Vision and Mission Statements. Mission: Our mission is to graduate every student college, career and community-ready. In doing so, we lift all youth out of circumstances of poverty and scarcity. Our Goals: Number one, every child by the end of the third grade will read and comprehend at the proficient level. Number two, every child by the end of the ninth grade will demonstrate mastery of algebra concepts and application. And third, but definitely not least, every child by the end of the 12th grade will graduate and be college and career-ready. Please. Furthermore, it's important to name our core values to help continue to maintain a sense of shared responsibility and accountability. And these are our students, just so you know the picks. We value learning and achievement for all students. We value equity, diversity and inclusion. We value our families as partners and the education of their students. Next slide, please. Let me begin by sharing what are Esser Funds. These funds are specifically meant to support local education agencies or otherwise known as school districts in their planning to reopen schools after COVID and provide a plan for recovery. It is an opportunity for school districts and schools to reimagine what student learning can look like and create different yet amazing learning conditions for students that will address learning loss and school safety. It is important to understand that no man is an island. Therefore, we must all work together to find creative and new ways of learning and building student connections. These funds offer our district an opportunity to think outside the box and provide access to innovative programs and services for both children and adults we might not otherwise be able to implement and develop. Next slide, please. In this slide, you will note that there are three types of Esser Funds, as mentioned earlier. The catalyst for each Esser Fund is a direct impact of COVID. The CARES Act signed into law March of 2020 drove the Esser One allocation. The CRRS Act signed into law in December of 2020 drove Esser Two allocations and the American Rescue Plan signed into law on March 2021 drove Esser Three allocations. I would like to highlight that Esser One, Two and Three are all one-time funds and have expenditure deadlines in stringent California Department of Education expenditure reporting requirements. These reports are generated and submitted by the Business Services Team as we met earlier. These funds are all subject to audits subsequent this school year. All three funds can be spent in the same base manner. Esser Three, however, has a second layer of requirements that I will go over in this presentation. It's also important to note that the funds that are not expended will need to be spent back, sent back by the deadline. Next slide, please. Esser Three Funds, unlike Esser One and Two, have a, has a requirement in that 20% of the funds must be spent to address the academic impact of lost instructional time through the implementation of evidence-based interventions and the district may use, utilize up to 80% of the allocation to continuously and safely operate schools for in-person learning in a way that reduces or prevents the, the spread of COVID-19. This list includes examples of programs that can be developed and implemented as part of the 20% set aside. I will highlight a few. As you know that on this list, we do have summer learning, which we have already begun planning, after-school programs offered at many of our sites and mental health service supports that are also offered at many of our sites and district-wide for both students and families. Next slide. Moving on to categories of expenditures, this slide illustrates by category how Esser One allocations were expended. The largest allocation we spent was on transportation for a total of approximately $2.3 million. As you can see that the second largest allocation was spent on maintenance and facilities for a total of approximately $2.2 million. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates by category how Esser Two allocations have been expended. The largest allocation spent has been on in-person incentives for a total of approximately $9.4 million. The second largest allocation has been spent on instructional supports for a total of approximately $5.8 million. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, Esser Three has a second layer of federal mandates. Specific to Esser Three, California Department of Education required stakeholder engagement and feedback as part of the process and the development of the plan submitted to the School Board on October of 2021. Here is a summary of the three major strategies utilized by the district to engage and elicit feedback from staff and community. Number one, LCAP meetings and surveys were used to determine needs of resources and services across the district. Additional inquiry was embedded into expanded learning opportunity grant meetings that were hosted virtually. And community surveys were developed and shared on district social media to provide community-wide access. A team of administrators worked together last year to analyze the qualitative data and land on themes to determine district-wide categories for expenditures. Next slide, please. As a result of these engagement opportunities, a total of 31 high-priority qualitative themes emerged. I will highlight a few on each slide. On this slide, I'd like to highlight tutoring, dual-language immersion resources. The dual-language immersion program is at three of our schools, Pittman, McKinley, and Honkingston. Additional training for classified and certificated staff and improved facilities. Next slide, please. On this slide, I'd like to highlight and underscore professional development again. Pops up again, parent supports and mental health services. Next slide, please. I like to underscore special education supports, English learner supports, student safety, college and career access, extracurricular and sports activities. Next slide, please. As mentioned before, ESER 1, 2, and 3 have similar allowable uses of funds as outlined by the California Department of Education. There is a robust list that I have included at the end of this presentation for reference. For now, I will be highlighting just a few. Allowable uses of funds including, include providing principals with resources to address their site-unique needs. In addition to provide professional development to staff, both certificated and classified, purchase PPE supplies necessary during COVID, the purchase of technology for both staff and students, facility repairs, and mental health services in all of our schools. At this time, I want to draw a through line between the allowable use of funds noted on the slides and our district emerged themes just reviewed. You can see a connection in activities such as staff professional development, again, both certificated and classified staff, mental health services, school facility repairs, and expanded learning that includes intercession and extended years such as summer school. Next slide. Now let's move into an expenditure snapshot for the 80% allocation of the ESER 3 funds required by California Department of Education. As our CBO Juarez mentioned earlier, our total ESER 3 funding is a little over $156 million. Please note the column to your far left identifies the departments that have been allocated funding and at, in their department-level budgets so that they may work with their teams to provide services, resources, supports under those specific categories. This means department leads have been asked to submit plans for each department allocation and are working very closely with business services and state and federal department to budget appropriately. All funds will need to be aligned to a department plan that identifies strategies specific to addressing COVID-related implications. As you can see from the slide, facilities has been designated the largest allocation. This would include the plans to renovate science classrooms at some of our secondary schools and install much-needed HVAC systems in some school site kitchens. Please keep in mind that the district may need to submit a preapproval application that the, for the purchase of contractual services to ensure that they're reasonable and necessary. The district may also meet federal requirements on procurement and will likely have to comply with DSA requirements. We will be working with procurement to ensure we comply with school board policies. Next slide, please. The 20% set aside for ESER 3 is illustrated on this slide. Again, the left column identifies departments that have been assigned allocations to meet the learning loss and school safety of COVID implications. Education Services has been designated with the largest allocation for expanded learning at the amount of $19 million. This would include intercession, summer school, residential programs, instructional materials and supplies, and staff professional development. Next slide, please. Our third bucket in the district approved plan is categorized as other. There is a total of approximately $14 million allocated to assessments, food and nutrition, and business services. The curriculum department, language development office, and special education department has been designated the largest allocation of approximately $6.2 million for assessments. This would, this would include both formative and/or summative assessments for core adopted or supplemental curriculum and professional development to help implement those assessments. Next slide, please. This is our current ESER 3 landscape as illustrated in this slide. These are current categories and amounts that have been expended as of this month, January of 2023. It is a total of approximately $2.8 million, which means we have approximately a balance of $150 million more to bring forward in expenditures, agreements, and contracts. The largest amount spent thus far is in staff recruitment. Next slide, please. Business and education services teams are working closely to allocate and expend funds compliantly. Our internal controls include frequent meetings between business, education services, and state and federal to establish or adjust expenditure procedures to ensure we are abiding by all school board policies. Meeting with procurement and department leads to address questions and provide training for proposals and contracts. Administration consulting with legal counsel and adhering to policies prior to submitting for school board review for approvals is essential. Furthermore, our district has an established online platform through business services that allows for virtual workflow approvals and creates checks and balances. Checks and balances creates a separation of power to avoid no one person or department being able to submit and approve an expense. Education Services works with business services to monitor workflow trees and make adjustments as necessary as people change positions or move on to other positions. Furthermore, administration is meeting with a principal advisory committee and STA leadership to discuss programs, program implementation, curriculum, and resources that could be funded from ESER 3 budgets. Next slide, please. I have come to the end of the presentation. I have included some hyperlinks that will lead you to resources at the California Department of Education website. You can find all information associated with guidelines, requirements for ESER 1, 2, and 3 on this website. Next page. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update, and we can take your questions and feedback now.
So just as we open up for questions, we don't have plans for ESER 1 and ESER 2, right?
No, they did not require plans.
And as we address COVID loss, where is tutoring? And what are we spending on tutoring to support our students?
So we do have a couple of different programs that we have invested in. Much of what is happening currently is through the ELOP grant. And that is another funding source that will come in a different board study session. The last slide that gave us our current landscape is what we currently have on there. So some of that might be personnel, resources, materials. But the majority of the after-school program is currently funded out of the ELOP, Extended Learning Opportunities Grant.
So nothing out of ESER 3 to support our ESER 1, ESER 2, to support tutoring specifically around COVID loss? That's not ELOP-funded?
Not currently, given that we have a separate grant specifically for that under Student Services.
Have you guys discussed using this funding to add additional tutoring? Because I know that we can never get enough tutoring. And are we able, do all the school sites have to receive the same tutoring? Or each school site, can they say, "We have a tutoring program that, you know, we would like"? Do they have the autonomy to suggest what tutoring company they want to go with?
Preliminary discussions have included the intercession at the secondary sites and using ESER funding for that. That program was very successful last year. It actually increased opportunities for secondary students to make up original credit and graduate, and part of that was tutoring. So that conversation has also been had. In addition, thinking about individual programs such as the English Language Learner Extended Day Program. The Language Development Office did receive a $3 million allocation to support English language learners and migrant students. In addition, we've also been having discussions about summer school and how that potentially can be used for that. And the big-ticket item was the UOP Residential Program that will also offer potential tutoring, but that won't be until the summer.
I guess I just need clarity. So what is a plan to support COVID loss with our students? Like, what are the things that we're doing? How are we attaching dollars to those services to really push our students forward?
Um, so with learning loss and we had expanded learning grant, not ELOP, but it was expanded learning grant and the in-person, that was also used for learning loss and social-emotional with ESER grants. I believe they're having money allocated out.
So given that the October 2021 Border Proof Plan, as you can, and we didn't provide a copy today, a copy today, but we can, oh, it's in the binders, okay. As you note, it's broad and vague. And so what we, the process that we have implemented in working with state and federal, and Ms. Tiffany Ashworth is here, and even the Jeff questions, we have created a template so that each individual department submits a mini-plan that is very specific to the category of funding that they have. And then through those individual mini-plans, they identify goals and objectives and how they're going to expend their funds. So they do vary, but it is an additional layer that wasn't required, that we decided that it was best practice so that we can hold folks accountable to how we're going to spend those funds. So each of those departments were able to look at the template, look at the category, and decide as a team, given their already existing work, how they can expand it, layer it, and provide additional services. So we have mini-plans for every department.
Do, anybody have any other questions?
Can I have the floor, Madam President?
Yes, you can.
I just want to double-check. So from the information that I'm looking at here, the ESER funds 1, 2, and 3 altogether were about $230 million. And what we've spent up till this time is around $60 million? Okay, that's a little bit confusing for me because in the past, we were told that, like, we were blowing through this money and we were in a lot of trouble with this money. And now we're being told that there's 170-odd million that we're not really sure how we're spending.
I, I can help you understanding?
Oh, I just, you know, I just, I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that, that I ask that because it looks like there's about $170 million still there. Thank you.
So we did, during the pre-presentation that we received from CBO Juarez and her assistant, there was, there was some funding that went to illegal contracts. If you noticed in the budget, there's oftentimes where we spent more money in facilities. I can't talk way more than that, but that's where some of the misspent money went to. So yeah, there was misspent money. And we will discuss that as we go along, as we are allowed to discuss in time.
Microphone? Mrs. Joanne, did this board did any illegal activities? In the books, I have read the books and everything. Did we did any illegal activities? There's something, you know, because we only approve what you guys bring us. Sincerely, you know, because I've been, I've been subpoenaed several times. And to be honest, I just want to move on because I see the money here. And I was told already that we have a budget. This board have done nothing wrong. We don't have a checkbook. We don't have anything. We just public servants. So I want that to be clear today. Thank you.
Diane, how, is that a question that our staff is credible to answer at this time?
Well, that, that question, as I understand it, is a question on the legality of the contract. So what may be more appropriate, if there's a question as we look into reviewing, investigating, determination whether contracts were appropriately let, then that would be the direction from the board.
So then, I'm glad that you brought that up, and we will address that because I would also like to add that we started an investigation into all of those funding. So thank you, Trustee Mendez, for throwing in that suggestion on to discussion. And I will go ahead and give direction as Board President to initiate an investigation into those illegal funds and illegal contracts that were put on.
Microphone? For Madam, microphone?
Yes, you may.
I would appreciate it very much because, you know, it is very important in our name be clear. And it's very important that we have a budget. And for what I know, we lost so much money in a budget in seeing all these numbers here. And it is very important for me and for all of us to get this thing clear for all. I will appreciate it. I know that you have been very attentive in the past to give me emails in the past and everything. And I have, have those emails. And I did what I had to do with the emails and I had to do to read it and digest it and learn more as a board member. But I wanted to thank you for this presentation. It clears a lot of things. And I want to thank you for that, both of you ladies. Thank you for coming today.
Is there any, go ahead, Colleen.
So thank you, thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. I, I was expecting a little bit more detail, though, in the breakdown. So just for example, if I have a, thank you. As I'm talking to people, as I'm talking to parents and families, a big question was, what did we spend the money on? And I, I like that it's broken down by category. But if I go back and say we spent $2 million on transportation, that's a big question because that was during distance learning time. So I, I won't know how to explain that expenditure. Can we get more detail?
We can bring back more detail. I could share that as you saw with ESER 3, we have not expended as much as we had hoped to. There were questions around specific contracts, and I could say that they were not executed with ESER 3. But we could definitely bring back, whether you want to see vendors or more specific services such as overtime or supplies. We will follow your direction.
I could bring it back in the summer when I have more time to dig into it. I have to pull reports, and they're very detailed. So for me to do that right now, because I am working on second interim and budget development. But I can do that in the summer, bring back a report. There's actually a category, is it what vendors we used or what the actual items were? It just takes time to get through all that information.
Joanne, can you tell us how much was spent on personnel and how many positions would the ESER fund?
I grabbed my computer. I grabbed my computer.
I do want to share that we do have some SR ongoing salaries that we will at one point need to determine how to best fund through SR3. And that is something that Joanne can bring back at another time.
I took notes from our meeting, Joanne, so do you want me to go ahead and?
Yes, because it's going to take me forever to go through all my emails.
So I wanted for transparency reasons for the information to come to from our CBOs. But that was questions that we did ask. And we spent 163 positions, a total of $16 million on personnel positions. We are planning to take a look at those positions that we funded with the SR funding. And we are going to analyze and evaluate how effective those positions are. Some of them were not allowed to be spent with SR funding. And so we are going to address that. And we are going to work on that as diligently and as quickly as possible as we can. But we are asking these tough questions. Community, if you have questions, send them in to us. That is our job to answer to you and have those questions ready up here if you can't have time to ask those questions. We also asked about the facilities and the amount of money that went into that department as well. And so we are getting those answers in pieces as they are coming about. Joanne is looking at all of the expenditures. And in evaluating this project that she's working on for us now, she was also able to uncover some spending and was able to prevent that spending from moving forward. So I want to go ahead and thank you for that option. But like I do agree with Trustee Cologne, Clerk Cologne, that we wanted a more detailed expectation of the budget, like exactly what went to, what vendors, what departments. And I know that we've, I've received information that shows like staff members and then a vendor thrown in there. So for example, one of the line items that was spent was labeled as JE00844684. And I'm not sure what that was exactly for, so I'm not understanding the coding on that.
So what happens is if we found an expense from another budget or another funding source, we journal it over. So JE is a journal. And we can pull the journal up and it'll give you more detailed information. But when it pulls on the report, it just says the JE number on there.
Okay, and Apex Learning?
Apex is our credit recovery online platform that we utilize for secondary students, which is really critical, important to ensure that our kids are getting access to making up credits.
Okay. Any other questions from my colleagues up here?
Just moving forward, just a piece of action if we could utilize the survey needs assessment for school sites so that we can make sure that we're supporting them with SR3 funding so that they have some autonomy of how they recover student loss due to COVID.
And then also I put notes as you guys were giving the first presentation about the community input during the ALCAP plan. We are improving our communications with Ms. Melinda. And so hopefully our ALCAP surveys, when they go out now, we are getting more input from community because we can have 10 meetings for community input. But if only five people show up to each of those meetings, how much community input are we really receiving? And so we have to really stop and think on our outreach on how we're getting to community. And I know you guys are picking this up. So we will work with you. Let us know how we can further support you in getting more input and voice from community and stakeholders.
Microphone?
Now, we got five minutes left. So actually, we got to log out already, Trustee Mendez, so I apologize. Maybe at the next, when we get into our regular board meeting, you can ask that question in your public comment. Okay, we would like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 4:56. See you back in four minutes. All right. It is 5:01. I know that was a quick four minutes. We'll give you guys about another two minutes since one of our trustees has stepped out for just a second. Two minutes.
And if you could help us, if there's seats beside you, we've got folks in the back that would like to come in. So we just need to make sure if you all could indicate if you have seats as folks come in.
Okay, we would like to go ahead and get started if we can all have a seat. Okay, we'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:04. And Christina will read the sentence under public content.
In order to help assure compliance with the Brown Act and in order to make our board meetings more effective and more efficient, trustees will speak only when recognized. And trustees who speak on a topic other than the agenda item currently under consideration will be out of order. Board meeting protocols. The safety and decorum of the school board meetings are important to Stockton Unified School District and the community. SUSD promotes the public's right to free speech. And we want to make sure that all community members, parents, and students are able to participate in a safe environment. We want to ensure all community members have a seat during the board meeting. We will have the maximum number of chairs allowed per fire code, 132. We ask that members of the public do not stand along the side of the walls or block the walkway. Anyone standing up during the meeting will be asked to take a seat. If they do not comply, they will be asked to leave. Any accredited news media representative who is standing will have a press credential clearly visible. The table is positioned in front of the first row of chairs. No one other than the person who is speaking may be able, may be at the table except for a guardian, administrator, or translator. For safety, people may not line up behind the speaker or wait until their turn. We want to give the person at the table the time and respect they deserve. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Attendees are not allowed to enter the area past the table where the board members are sitting. No profanity or obscenity. During the board meeting, if there is a disruption, the board president or designee will give a verbal warning to the person or persons causing the disruption. If the disruption continues after the verbal warning, the individual will be asked to leave or be removed from the premises for the remainder of the board meeting. After the meeting is concluded, we ask that community, we ask the community to clear the lobby area in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Item 1 dot 2, can we have roll call taken by Christina, please?
President Angel Anne Flores?
Present.
Vice President Keneitha Stevens?
Present.
Clerk Sophia Cologne?
Present.
Trustee Donald De Nair?
Present.
Trustee Cecilia Mendez?
Present.
Trustee Alicia Rico?
Present.
Trustee Raymond Zulueta?
Present.
Student Representative Abby Welker?
Present.
Thank you.
1 dot 4, Student Board Representative Report by Ms. Abby Welker of Chavez High School. And before I do that, I just want to add, she's doing an amazing job.
Thank you. So first, we're going to start off with Edison. And they would like to celebrate the class of 2021 and 2022 graduation rate of 88.5%. And Edison is working hard towards continuing to increase the graduation rate every year. Edison is pleased to report 44% of seniors have completed their FAFSA. Edison is gearing up for the LPAC testing, organizing a school-wide effort to support their ELD students through the process of reclassification, supporting our ELD students and their efforts. Edison is hosting eighth-grade parent night on February 7th. Several Edison teachers will be providing guidance and information for eighth graders showing our instructional program and coursework students can look forward at Edison. Edison students are celebrating their Winter Fest, January 23rd through their, through the 27th. Soul Vikings are engaged in spirit dress-up days throughout the week, which will culminate a Winter Fest rally on Thursday after school. Crowning their Edison, Winter Fest royalty, Winter Formal is being hosted at Edison this Saturday. Edison students are at the WASC lesson plans this week during advisory. Edison is engaged in continuous professional development amongst the faculty, supporting school-wide avid practices focused on student achievement. Edison departments have structured professional development for the month of January, highlighting focus note-taking and critical reading strategies. Edison has a developed in eighth-grade Algebra I class teacher, Alisa Taylor, has graciously provided her time to teach eighth graders who will be future Soul Vikings, providing them with experience on Edison campus and developing skills and experiences at Edison, instructional techniques firsthand. Special thanks to McKinley Hilton San Joaquin and Washington Elementary Schools students for participating in this program. At Franklin, the ELAC parents and ELD teachers recognize 50 English learner students who most improved their reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills. All students were awarded with a certificate of most improved. IB Junior Retreat is next week. 64 IB 11th grade students will be taking at least one IB exam this spring. Their Winter Formal is next week. At Chivas, we are proud to report that we've been working hard on assessing our seniors and completing their FAFSA. Our team has been preparing for our upcoming tests, the LPAC, SPACK, ASVAB, and CAST. CCHS is hosting eighth-grade parent night on February 6th. We are excited to showcase our school and our new Titans. Winter Fest will be held this Saturday. WASC will be happening this week, first week of February. Our team has worked hard to ensure that we are ready and prepared. Our students spent, our teachers spent our last faculty meeting dividing into data. We are excited to ignite the PLC process. CTE was in full force and their skill composition was last Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abby. And I'm sorry, I was trying to move on so fast to hear our student rep that I forgot and skipped item 1 dot 3, which is oral suggestions. And Abby will announce the number of public comments and request each person to provide their public comment in the order they were received. And just a note, from now on, can we put that student honoree goes before public oral suggestions and comment going forward from now on? Awesome, thank you.
Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. Trustees, we have one common card for item 1.3. Common card is from Ms. Brenda Vasquez regarding item 2.1. Ms. Vasquez, please come up to the table and mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. This is new issues. Angel Anne, after voting no and abstaining from countless items that you stated were illegal, you have listed on this agenda item 6.21, out-of-state travel. You, well, you have placed on the agenda the ultimate party crew for sure. 542 administrators and faculty to go and live it up in Las Vegas for a whopping...
Excuse me, this is not close.
This is the, this is public session on items one. For purposes of closed session, I believe this would be appropriate for the second closed session, ma'am. But your card is already here, they'll keep it in order.
I look forward to your public comment in the regular, when we come back, Brenda, thank you.
Trustees, this concludes common cards for item 1.3. Thank you.
Moving on to item 1 dot 5, Student Honoree, Ms. Yasmin Espinoza of Stagg High School. And Mr. Brett Tolliver, principal, would you like to come up to introduce your student?
You got to push the button.
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is one of our outstanding student leadership students at Stagg High School, Ms. Yasmin Espinoza.
Good evening, Dr. Miller, esteemed board members and our SUSD community. My name is Yasmin Espinoza and I am the ASB secretary at Stagg High School. I have been a Stagg student for four years and I'm looking forward to graduating as a Delta Queen in May. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to tell you about what my ASB team has accomplished at Stagg this year. My experience at Stagg, it seems to revolve around one word, change. Since my freshman year, there have been many changes with administration. I have had three different principals in my four years at Stagg. Mr. Tolliver has been the only principal to return after one year. So we finally have some consistency at our school. Mr. Tolliver and our admin team are the biggest supporters of student activities. They are at every single event we have planned for school and they always say yes to our ideas because they believe in our program and support anything that contributes to our school's culture. Our principal and vice principals always put students first and we are thankful for their leadership. Another change throughout my high school experience happened during my freshman year, when the world came to a sudden halt because of COVID. We changed how we functioned as a society. We were told to stay home for two weeks, wear masks, wash our groceries, and avoid contact with people. Those two weeks turned into two years without seeing my friends, going to school events, and having meaningful human interactions. In July of 2022, there was change again. Another new ASB teacher, but this time it felt like a fresh start. With the new student activity director, we felt like our AAS team was given refreshed energy, focus, and a real chance to make my senior year the best it could be. Our ASB class set two goals for this school year. First, we want to improve our school culture by being intentional and inclusive about everything we do so that students feel like they belong at Stagg. Secondly, we want to increase school spirit and Stagg pride. To do this, we had to really look at the demographics and interests of our diverse student body and listen to what the students want. For example, we have a lot of athletes on campus. So what did we do? We planned soccer, dodgeball, basketball, relay races, and other sports competitions between the classes during lunch. We expanded that into competitions between staff and students. Our staff beat our students. Our staff beat our students in a basketball game that doubled as a toy drive. Due to its success, we're hosting a staff versus student volleyball game on Thursday. In addition to athletes, we also have a lot of students who spend most of their free time playing video games. So we hosted Smash Bros. and NBA two K competitions. Every activity we plan is easily accessible to all students regardless of status. We fostered relationships between proud alumni and current students through our homecoming festivities. Homecoming started with a rally full of competition, prizes, laughs, cheers, and school pride. Then many families and alumni attended our homecoming tailgate, which which featured over twenty booths of current clubs, a live DJ, and food trucks. We ended the night with a dance where four hundred students attended. We all could sense the school pride during homecoming week, which was made clear when our vice principal, Mrs. Torres, told us that attendance increased while detentions decreased the week of homecoming. We've hosted other events that have involved family, alumni, and community members, such as bingo night and our widely successful trunk or treat. We've organized efforts to help our community, such as a canned food drive for the Stockton Emergency Food Bank and a holiday toy drive for Children's Shelter. To increase our branding, we have grown our reach through Instagram with seven hundred new followers in five months. We have designed more Stag merchandise in hopes of seeing brown and gold proudly worn at school and around Stockton. We are most proud of the connections we created and developed with our special education students and staff members. Artist Teacher has expressed that his students never felt included or that they were truly a part of the Stag community until this year. To know that we can help make school a safe place for our special education schoolmates means that we have achieved our goals. The biggest evidence of the change we've created this year is the contrasting opinions between seniors and freshmen. When I asked my fellow seniors about their experience as Stag students, they had both positive and negative feedback. But when I talked to freshmen, they had nothing but positive things to say. Izzy talked about how fun school is because of the lunchtime activities. Alexa said that she looks forward to going to school every day because of all the events we have for students. Kiana talked about having teachers who are caring and understanding. To witness the pride the freshmen have gives us hope that future students will actually feel excited and proud about becoming part of the Stag family. To sum up, my fellow ASB leaders and I will continue to be the change we want to see at our school and in our community. I am so proud of the change we've created in just five months with very limited resources. Imagine what we can accomplish with our community support. So how can you support us? First, we ask that you focus on all the good that happens at Stag instead of only repeating exaggerated accounts of negativity on social media. We want to thank Mrs. Melinda Meza for coming to our school to capture events such as Club Rush, the Care Locker Lunch, our homecoming festivities, and much more. Next, my classmates would like more variety of classes to prepare us for the real world, such as a cooking, financial literacy, and ASL classes. This will also keep students engaged and excited about school. Also, we welcome the presence of more SROs and well-trained CSNs on campus so that students can feel safe and protected. We want our district to hold students accountable so that all schools are free of bullying, drugs, and hate. Lastly, we invite you to our events because we want you to witness firsthand what Stag pride looks like and how the Delta Kings and Queens are flourishing. As we like to say at Stag, it's a good day to be royalty. Thank you for your time tonight and your dedication to Stockton students like myself.
So Stag is my school and I want to say you did an amazing job. We are so proud to hear about the positivity that's happening at Stockton Unified, especially at your school, and we look forward to hearing more from you and other students at Stag. So thank you so much and thank you, Mr. Tolliver as well.
And do you have parents here? Okay, so can you come up and get a pictured with your representative, your trustee, and your principal and staff who is here to support you? And I just want to add that I love the accountability on our part and that's what we need more of. And so you can assure, be assured that we will go ahead and look into everything that you suggested, okay? Oh yeah, that's right. Stag pride inside goes to Ms. Halakakis. Okay, item one point six, public employee discipline dismissal release. And this is only if an employee requests that complaints or charges be heard in open session. And Ms. Diane Marshall Freeman, do we have any cases?
No, we don't.
Okay, moving on to item one dot seven and Vice President Stevens will go ahead and discuss what the board will consider in closed session with the items listed in closed session.
Thank you so much, President Flores. So in closed session, we will discuss two point one, public employee appointment, certificated leave of absence, resignation, retirement, and appointment. Two point two, public employee, public employee appointment classified, leave of absence, resignation, retirement, recent employment offer, deceased, and appointment. Two point three, conference with labor negotiator, district chief agency negotiator Tracy, Dr. Tracy Miller, interim superintendent, and Ms. Wendy D. Simone, interim assistant superintendent of Human Resources, Employee Organizations, STA, CSEA eight twenty-one, CSEA three eighteen, CSEA eight 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 five, S U S U, SPPA, O E three, Police, USA, N U H W, non-represented employees, two point four, public employee discipline dismissal and release, two point five, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation subsection D one of government section five four nine five six point nine, two point six, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation under subsections D two and E three of government section five four nine five six point nine, claim by KJ Quality Transportation, claim by James Stelly, claim by Creisha Gonzalez, claim by Hugo Palma, claim by Lucas Suco, claim by Joe Billingsley and California Education Consultants. Two point seven, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation under subsections D two and E two of government code section five four nine five six point nine dispute with Brenda Blythe. Two point eight, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initial initiation of litigation pursuant of government code five four nine five six point nine, sub D four, one case, two point nine D, student expulsion, Z through fifteen, D through sixteen, Z through eighteen, and ZZ nine. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we are going to go into closed session. And closed session is closed at five twenty-four. Sorry, public session is closed at five twenty-four.
The board will now recess to closed session.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for sticking it through. We apologize to our students who have been waiting patiently for us. Um, can we call the meeting to public session open at, what time is it? Seven twenty-eight. And we are going to start off with the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Arturo Ramirez, who is our student body president for Merlot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and just for all.
And then if my colleagues up here wouldn't mind if we can go ahead and move the recognition of students um, right now, um, ahead of time so that we can go ahead and let them go home now. So they've been here a long time waiting for us. Um, is, can I get a consensus?
I second that.
Oh, wow, how can I say that? Sorry, you guys, I'm trying to get all you guys in all at one time. Okay. Mr. Arturo, can you come to the front so we could get a picture with you and Mr. Phillips? And do you have family here with you today and your family up here with you? Okay, colleagues, do you mind if we move up the award presentations for our students? Can I get a consensus on that?
I second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do a motion to move seven point one to now.
Okay, awesome. Um, roll call vote. Do we need a roll call vote for that or?
If you're revising the agenda, it's a motion, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, we got a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
President? President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Okay, um, Christina, were you able to get the pictures? Can we put them up on the screen?
Madam President, point of order, I didn't vote. My vote is yes, but I didn't, I didn't hear my name. So trustee Zulueta is voting yes.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have photos.
You do, you didn't get them? Okay, well, we do have photos, but can I get our Jane Frederick students to come up Santiago Lopez? Leonardo Gonzalez Garcia? Jose Garcia? Gregorio Garcia? Abiel Betran? And can we get Mr. Miller to come up with them, please? I'm gonna come down and join you guys in a minute. Um, but these students here made from wood, the good wood, I think it was like the redwood, was it the redwood? Yeah, and you know what? Actually, I'm just gonna come down and I'm gonna let one of you guys talk about what you guys did. How about that?
Everything really?
Hello? Hi. See if it works. Uh, yeah, he, he put everything together. He was like the main one that actually uh, did everything for the benches. I came in, me and Santiago, we put uh, like, we started sending them down and everything. And then, who was it? Jose and Abdul. They all helped us and took their time and their day out of school to go help us and carry them to the school or off the trucks and everything. That's a school, kind of far away. Yeah. That's pretty much it.
How many?
Thank you. Six, seven.
They, I don't think they heard. How many big, how many little?
I, how many, how many? Four, four small ones for the little kids and two big ones for the for the other kids. Thank you.
So if you guys need jobs, I'm sure they can do some little side work for you guys. If you guys need any building, any other school sites, um, that could be a little side business for our Jane Frederick students who maybe were once counted out and look at where they're coming back. So Mr. Miller, would you like to say anything?
No, I just want to say thanks to the CTE program. They stepped up big time. At our little school, you know, and helped us a lot. Uh, and then our staff, you know, giving us the opportunity so we can do things like this. And then Merlot, you know, coming up and having that. And then Angel Anne was the one that's presented it to me in the beginning and she's always been there for our school and we appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for all that you guys do. And then Mr. Hesse, do you want to say anything?
You know, I'll just say that they've never done this before and they came out just beautifully, beautiful redwood benches, professionally done. Um, they're getting more orders and requests from other schools because they did such a good job. So good job, guys. Way to go.
Good job. You guys are doing an excellent job. Thank you guys for coming up today, okay? And let me know when you guys have your Friday, next student Friday too. That's my favorite part of my job up here is when I get to see students doing something. Thank you, Jane Frederick staff, all of you guys for coming and showing support. Hey, um, and now we're gonna move on to item four point two. Uh, we recently lost a CSEA member by the name of Mr. Juan Gallo, who was a grounds and utility supervisor over at facilities. Um, we would like to give a moment of silence. And also, um, after we give a moment of silence for Juan, I would also like to give a moment of silence for Sandra Moby Hill, who has also recently passed. And she was also a huge part of SUSD, um, retired teacher and principal and all the things that I heard about her, uh, Dr. Miller and I were able to make it to her funeral um, to show that she has some support from SUSD. Um, and so we'll do a moment of silence for Juan and then we'll do a moment of silence for Ms. Moby Hill.
Trustee Flores, can I have the floor?
Can you do it till after we do the moment of silence?
Is it related to that moment of silence for a student too? Can we add him there or we doing a separate? A student who passed away in December from Fillmore School, special class day? Thank you. Uh, it's Adam Sanchez Ariola. Thank you.
So we'll do three moment of silences. Yes. So first moment of silence for Juan. Now we'll do a moment of silence for Ms. Moby Hill. And now we'll do a moment of silence for.
Adam Sanchez Arriola.
Thank you. And if anybody else there knows of anybody who passes that has contributed a lot of their dedication to SUSD, please let us know so that we can give respect. We want to appreciate all of our staff. Okay, moving on to item four point three, which is the action taken in closed session by Vice President Kunita Stevens.
Thank you. So in closed session, we motioned for to approve two point O. It passed five one one. Yes, it's where trustee Cologne, De Nair, Flores, Mendez and Stevens. We had a no vote from Zulawetta and an abstention from trustee Rico. Item two point two, motion was passed to approve the public employee classified leave of absence, resignation, retirement and appointment. It passed five one one. Yes, it's where trustees Cologne, De Nair, Flores, Mendez and Stevens. We had a no vote from Zulawetta and a abstention from trustee Rico. Two point three, oh no, sorry. So go on. Two point three was information only. Two point four was no reportable act. Two point five, no reportable action. Two point six, it passed unanimously to reject the claim from KJ Quality Transportation. Motion was approved unanimously to pay the claim for James Skelly. Also, motion passed unanimously to reject the claim for Creisha Gonzalez. Motion passed unanimously to pay the claim for Hugo Palma in the amount of two thousand eight hundred five dollars and ninety seven cent. Motion passed unanimously to pay the claim for Lucas Sucko in the amount of four hundred ninety dollars and six cent. Motion passed unanimously to reject the claim of Joe Billingsley and California Educational Consultants. Motion passed unanimously. Yeah, two point seven, nothing to report. And two point eight, information only.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice President. We're gonna move on now to item four dot four for the order of agenda and Abby will read the oral announcement.
This is the opportunity for the Board of Trustees to make any changes to the order of agenda. Otherwise, the order of the agenda will be as published. Thank you.
Do we have anybody, any colleagues up here who would like to change the order of agenda?
Trustee Rico, go ahead. I just, I just want to pull item six point twelve, six point twenty one and fourteen point one.
I think that.
For separate discussion.
Yeah, we could pull that when we get to six point one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Moving on to item five point one, which is oral suggestions and Abby will announce the number of public comments and request each person to bring their public comment in the order they were received.
Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. Trustees, we do have several public comment cards. The first set of cards are regarding item thirteen point one. For speaker is Ms. Felice Bryson Perez. Her card is in regards to thirteen point one and thirteen point five. Ms. Felice Bryson Perez, if you could be, so kind of come up to the table and mic. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. I think earlier I might forgot to recognize all of you. I just went straight to talking in the first meeting. I did just want to discuss these items real quick of in looking at what over the last couple of years we cut and what we're looking at bringing back and the relevance of the different positions. Specifically, the need for labor relations with, I believe now you're at nine bargaining units and the other of building of that department. So as one of your bargaining units in the experiences that we're having, that this is a key position. Looking at some of the other positions, I know that you all will do your due diligence to get the information of, of those positions needing. Those positions that are needed and the importance of them. But I also want to look at some of the positions. I know we have the ELOP Director and Coordinator and one not on here, which I hope to see is also LCAP. So in the need of a director or coordinator, really trying to look at which one is going to be more important and, and what the district needs. So I'm just asking you all to, to really look at those and take that into consideration. But just wanted to give our feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Hart Preet Chima regarding thirteen point one.
Hello, everyone. Just given the presentation that we were given earlier, it doesn't seem like these positions would be appropriate for Esser funding and that's what's indicated. So just some clarification on how those job descriptions would qualify them for Esser funding would be much appreciated. So then we can apply that knowledge to all the other positions too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Paolo Enriquez regarding thirteen point one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that Esser one, two and three funds could only be used to hire new staff to address the COVID nineteen public health crisis. And if that position doesn't directly address the COVID nineteen public health crisis, then you would probably have to pay that money back. So if someone could clarify that and whether this is an appropriate use of Esser funds, that would be great. And if it's the case that this money, that this is money you will have to pay back eventually, why not just use the general fund to pay for these jobs? These salaries are going to be an ongoing expense. And if you can't cover them now by using the general fund, I'm struggling with seeing how you'll be able to do it in the future. You had a special study session today on Esser funds where I was hoping to see an itemized list of exactly how Esser funds were spent, not generalized expenditures of how much was spent overall and how much is remaining in Esser one, two and three. Because it makes it hard for trustees to make informed decisions when you haven't told them things like how much of the expended Esser funds will have to be paid back and when those repayments will need to occur. Those things will inevitably, inevitably impact the district budget, which the board is tasked with overseeing and will of course influence their decisions on, on which positions to reinstate. So I hope the business office gets them that information soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is from Ms. Alyssa Laba regarding thirteen point one.
Good evening. I'm expressing concern and have inquiry on why we are using Esser funds to provide two management positions at Deputy Labor Relations and Deputy Superintendent. From what I understand at the previous, at the previous presentation, Esser funds were used to boost mental health and public health services. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall in twenty twenty one that the student to council ratio was one to two hundred and eighty nine. And as mental health coordinator of Stockton Stans, I would like to know what that ratio looks like now. Earlier today, trustee Zuleta stated that it was only sixty million that we have spent already. How much did in fact go into mental health and the, and has the district provided equitable surveys to check in on the status of our students who have experienced trauma and symptoms from the pandemic? With students being home from late into time and many of our students coming from the working class, some living in food deserts and their parents were essential workers. I empathize with the students who have been suffering in silence if mental health services are not being prioritized and high paying salary positions are being used with this money for their health instead. We have had two years to come up with the plan and we should have a plan already in place for our youth recovery.
Next two cards are regarding item thirteen point five. First speaker is Mr. Victor Garcia.
I can probably get the thirteen six out of the way as well. On the agenda tonight are two board agenda items, thirteen five and thirteen six for ELOP job descriptions. Thirteen five, ELOP Director conflicts with the Program Facilitator job description just approved on December fourteenth. The revised Program Facilitator job description says under supervision received, receives direction from the administrator of ELOP and the site administrator. The Program Facilitator will support and direct the work of program support staff as assigned. The new proposed job description for an ELOP Director lists under examples of duties, supervises, oversees and evaluates all expanded learning programs, including ELOP, ACES and all expanded learning staff members at SUSD school sites. Program facilitators have always been evaluated by the site principal and supported by the after school office. When three eighteen negotiated this job description, a director evaluating members was not discussed. This practice does not seem fair. The site administration knows the day to day performance of the program facilitator. It isn't reasonable or fair that a person based at the district office would evaluate staff at the site level. With forty two sites, how often would the program facilitator's performance be observed in order to provide a true evaluation of his or her performance? The process and plan for ELOP has not been transparent. As program facilitators who are boots on the ground and actually run these programs, we have not been included in any planning or discussions regarding our needs for support or what we see as support in general for the program. Does it make sense that we will be involved in the planning process? Where is the needs assessment to determine actual needs? Where's the data? Where are the surveys? I'm not even sure what current leadership positions will be responsible for moving forward. How could there possibly be enough work to go around? Our current position is going to be deleted to add these new positions? We do not know. It appears many of the duties of the current after school leadership team will be picked up by the ELOP coordinator position. So what will the district leadership do? To continue the assurance of transparency and honest accountability of the funding that is being utilized, we need to implement the collaboration and input of stakeholders for our programs instead of people at the top to society and what our needs and wants are. I've been lucky enough to be on the negotiation seam and I think there was one piece that, that I think has been put under the rug and that's been the, the chance to be able to hire more Paris to work with our ELOP programs. That position that they showed a job description for has not come up again. And it was definitely in a way to counter the fact that we were always contracting out positions and jobs that would further help our after school programs. So I just want to make sure that we're clear because if that's the case, especially with getting, gaining a lot of knowledge from our labor reps, we may be facing more unfair practice charges if we don't try to deal with those things first before we move on to other positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is for Mr. Daniel Franco regarding item thirteen point five.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I kind of missed the podium to start with that. My name is Daniel Franco, After School Program Facilitator at Hazelton Elementary. Tonight, I would like to speak on the subject of creating a position of Director for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. While I do not doubt that there is a need for a director to oversee the Expanding Learning Program as it is indeed rapidly expanding, I do believe that we should do our best as a district to build this program from the bottom up as opposed to from the top down. What does building from the bottom up look like? For me, it would look like ensuring that special needs assist staff are brought in and made available to ELOP facilitators that serve special needs students and their programs. It would also look like bringing in TK assists for those programs that are serving our very youngest students. Additionally, I believe it would be prudent to work on ensuring that our nine hour day of services is actually nine hours by beginning work toward the rolling out of our before school portion of expanded learning that has yet to take place. Our admin team in ELOP, they work incredibly hard and I'm not doing anything to say that they don't. I'm sure they do need the help. Nevertheless, I believe that building this program from the bottom up is the best course of action for our students to ensure that they are served first. Thank you.
Mr. Franco, and next common card is also for Mr. Franco regarding item thirteen point six. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening once again. I would like to say that while I'm not against the creation of this new ELOP site coordinator position, in fact, I would like to have the opportunity to apply for it myself when the time is right. However, in the name of fairness and equity, I believe that there is a conversation that needs to be held by all shareholders prior to voting or placing this item even on the agenda. By shareholders, I mean ELOP admin, school site admin, ELOP facilitators and partner agencies, and of course, CSEA Chapter three eighteen. This is important as recite, receiving buy-in from all parties involved before placing and/or voting for an item on the agenda is the best means to reach an outcome that is understood to be beneficial for all parties involved. I do think this position is needed, but I believe there is also a need for communication between stakeholders that should happen before the position is created and not after. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two cards are regarding item ten point five. First speaker is Maria Mendez.
Good evening, President Flores, Vice President Stevens, Clerk Cologne and trustees. The reason I'm here tonight is regarding ten point five and also to support ten point six. Due to the fact that the previous board did a special board meeting at twelve o'clock. But before the special board meeting, I had stated on a regular board meeting, the voice of the community of why the board was continuing doing special board meetings at two, one o'clock, then twelve o'clock. So it was differently. Not only that my money was cut once, but this was the second time due to the fact that it was retaliation and this proves there was retaliation. Not only that, but the previous board had changed a regular board meeting only for one trustee, which it was within their circle to accommodate them because they were gonna go to a training. This tells us in the community, there was a retaliation against President Flores now and former trustee Maria Mendez. Now, because we were not doing illegal activities or supporting their illegal activities like illegal contracts by a person without the authorization of the board that it was not approved to actually do a contract for El Concilio and signing it themselves. That money, the district has to pay back. The district will also pay back money for the night doing that year plan for a couple of years because it has to be done. Talking about money, look at everything that is stolen. Who steals what? With that, I do support trustee President Flores and the other four colleagues as well. As we have known that their retaliation will not stop, no matter what. If you don't want to have it their way, it will be the highway, no matter what. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next card is from Ms. Sylvia Cantu regarding items ten point five and ten point six.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Cantu. Maria Mendez was my.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Cantu. Maria Mendez was my board member for eight years. And not only was she my board member for eight years, she's also a friend of mine. And I have spoken on this issue many, many times when they were denied many, many times. According to Board Bylaw nine two five zero, if a board member does not attend all board meetings during the month. He or she is eligible to receive only a percentage of the monthly compensation equal to the percentage of meetings attended unless unless otherwise authorized by the board in accordance with law ed code thirty five one two zero. It further states that the members must maybe paid for meetings missed when the board by majority vote finds they were performing designated services for the district at the time of the meeting or when they were absent because of illness, jury duty, or a hardship deemed acceptable by the board. Nowhere does it say in the board by law that they have to have a doctor's note. Like one board member mentioned, well, I have a doctor's note. That's why I don't have a resolution, but where does it state that you have to have a doctor's note? It's a hardship. She was at work. Many times they had said that they don't want to schedule it, but it goes the way it goes. So once again, I'm here speaking on this agenda item, which I'm glad it's back. Because if it's good enough for one board member to get paid, then why not these two? They have been approving mostly others, others. I mean, one board member had a hardship that was in the year two thousand and twenty one. Not one single board member asked that person. What was the hardship? Not one. So once again, this is why, like I said, Maria Mendez was my board member and she's also a friend. So got to advocate. So hope we understand that that's why I'm speaking. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next comment is regarding item thirteen point eight from Ms. Mary K. Moore.
Make sure you push the button. The one in the middle. Oh, I have to push it while I'm. Come on. Okay. Okay, come on, guys. We got good technology. Okay. So I'm here speaking about the salary increase for management teams. I don't know if everyone realizes how hard our managers work. And yes, I'm CSEA. Guess what? I got twenty five percent in the last five years. Guess what? Who didn't? No managers. They didn't get the COVID. They didn't get anything. Is that fair? Are you going to work for nothing? Let me introduce you to my team. My payroll manager is Tammy Reynolds. Hey, some people love her. Some people not so much. I love her. Do you know that when I'm working at eight o'clock at night, she's there with me? Guess who doesn't get paid? She doesn't. I do. She worked tonight until seven or eight. What's she doing? So you guys get your W two's. Can anybody else do her job in this district? No. You have to take care of your people. Now, maybe for some odd reason. The salaries aren't where they're supposed to be. Because we're still getting raises. You guys know this, right? All of us hourly employees. Am I right? Are you guys all getting raises? No? Eight twenty one just got four percent. Yes, we did. A it was last year. And whose negotiating team is supposed to be doing?
Mary.
Ours. I'm sorry. I'm I got off there. I so sorry.
You could tell us.
What I'm trying to say is when people work overtime, they should be compensated for it. Doesn't matter if you're a manager or you're an hourly employee. It's it. It's the right thing to do. If you guys need to see what we've gotten and they haven't. I know I can get that information for you. Or you can see it in black and white. And thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mary. We hear you.
God, I hope you guys really do. Because it, you know, we're going to start losing management teams. And then where are we going to be? Oh, I have one more question. One more thing. I'm so sorry. But why? Why? This is for the old board, not necessarily you guys. But why are we paying Ramirez still?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Next comment is regarding item six point one two from Paolo Enriquez.
What item was that?
Six point one two.
I'd like to request that agenda item six point one to be removed for separate consideration as an action item. When the district hires a vendor for a renovation, it's contractually guaranteed a specific outcome within a specific timeframe, a new roof, a new HVAC system, et cetera. But when it comes to using a lobbyist, those same assurances don't just don't exist. Ideally, you would pay the lobbying firm and then they, through their experience with committees and the legislature, are supposed to secure funding. But again, the results are dubious. They could get you some money or no money at all and still satisfy the terms of this agreement because they aren't promising to bring back a set dollar amount for Stockton Unified. And yes, they will be obligated to provide other services under exhibit A of the advocacy and legislative engagement agreement. This includes, among other things, quote, providing guidance and expertise to the Stockton Unified School District related to the local control funding formula, local control accountability plans and other state budget and state level accountability requirements. But let's be honest, local education agencies do not hire lobbying lobbying firms for these services. That's what the business office is for. You'd be doing it in the hopes that their efforts will lead to a huge return in terms of dollars for the district. And in that sense, you'd be taking a big financial risk by entering into this agreement with capital advisors. It's a $5,000 monthly retainer that will have to be paid on the first of each month for seventeen months. That's an $85,000 gamble that at the very least should not occur without discussion and scrutiny. Is there a specific project the district is seeking funds for? What has capital advisors been able to accomplish for districts of similar size? Have you explored other options like partnering with the neighboring district to share a lobbying firm so you can split the costs? Those are just some questions that I think are worth asking. Thank you.
Mr. Enriquez, have a seat. Next comment is for Mr. Paolo Enriquez regarding item ten point three.
Like in past board minutes, the ones here for the December thirteenth, twenty twenty two meeting are pretty bare. Under five point one oral suggestions and comments from the community regarding open session agenda items, the only thing that's written is, quote, six public comments were received. You don't include the names of those individuals. You don't identify which items were addressed and you don't provide a summary of any of the public comments. These minutes also don't have any summaries of board discussions. I think when four members of CSEA speak up in support of revisions to the after school site program facilitator job description, you should make note of that. I think when Jerry Gonzalez is seeking clarification for why there was an overlap in dates with the tri group contracts, that should be documented. People are taking time out of their day to come here and be heard and they deserve to have have that reflected in the minutes. And if you as board members find yourselves initiating a discussion, asking questions, expressing concerns, then those are things that should also be included as part of the historical record. Other school districts do it. There's no reason why Stockton Unified shouldn't either. Unfortunately, because of revisions to Board Bylaw nine three two four minutes and recordings by the majority board last August. Policy was shifted away from requiring summaries of all board discussions and summaries of all public comments. Under the current language of Board Bylaw nine three two four, summaries will only be made if requested by the board. To quote the grand jury report titled dissension, dismay, and disarray, the accurate and timely documentation of public meetings is essential for transparency. I ask that a motion be made to include summaries of all board discussions and all public comments in the December thirteenth, twenty twenty two minutes and that it be brought back for review at the next regular meeting. And until you are able to reintroduce language into board policy mandating summaries of board discussions and public comments as standard practice. I ask that you make a separate motion today to have summaries included in the drafting of this meeting's minutes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is from Ms. Alyssa Pack regarding item twelve point one.
Good evening. I thank you for this opportunity to share our community process engagement and our decision to rename our aspire school site from aspire Stockton Elementary to aspire Arts and Science Academy. Twenty twenty was a crazy year for schools. Especially our brand new school aspire Stockton Elementary, being a part of replacing this temporary name was a privilege of being part of the founding class of this new school. Principal de Santiago discussed the name change during several of our weekly parent Zoom meetings and participating parents were given the chance to give suggestions and feedback. From these informal discussions, a ballot was sent home so that each family could vote on our new school name, colors and mascot. Although the colors and mascot we voted for were not the winning candidates, I was very pleased with the new school name. Aspire Arts and Science Academy was chosen because it reflects the focus on creative learning and scientific exploration that this academy practices every school day. We are very excited about our new name as it has inspired us to continuously work within our community. I thank you for listening and I hope you will vote in favor of the name change at aspire Arts and Science Academy.
Thank you. Next comment card is from Ms. Erica Kleiner regarding item six point two seven.
Hello, my name is Erica Kleiner and I am a choir teacher at Caesar Chavez High School. I have worked as a music teacher in Stockton Unified since two thousand and twelve. And I would like to take a moment to speak to consent item six point two seven. This is an MOU with the San Joaquin County Office of Education regarding the arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant and Prop twenty eight. I think it just says arts grant. It is very exciting to finally have the state designate money specifically for music, dance, theater, visual, and media arts teachers as well as curriculum materials and equipment to support these teachers. It is also very rewarding to know that citizens of California want to bring arts, which were formerly known as VAPA, back into the classroom by voting yes on Prop twenty eight last November. But I do have some questions about this particular item. Why is an event coordinator being hired as a consult in regarding to an arts grant? Aren't there teachers or other staff members in or around Stockton Unified School District who might be able to oversee this grant? And if we need an outside group to hold us accountable on how this money is spent, shouldn't it be an arts organization such as Create California or the Alliance for Arts Education? I would encourage you to vote no on item six point two seven, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next six cards are regarding item six point two one. First speaker is Mr. Jerry Gonzalez.
Good evening. I too missed the podium and this is kind of hokey. I asked that six two one be moved from consent to discussion. I believe that the cost of approximately one point one million for better than five hundred individuals would be spent. Would benefit and improve the staff and faculty overwhelmingly as they are the ones in the classrooms. Not for things such as consultants and recently former board president's attorney. Those monies, I believe, were wasted. It is substantial amount of money, but I believe it would help restore normalcy following COVID for all of your staff and faculty administrators. I think we as a community need to show trust and faith in the faculty, staff, and administrators by supporting them and their professional development and not by tearing them down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next common card is for Ms. Lori Russo.
I had to ask how to push the button. It's pretty simple. It's one button. Good evening, trustees. My name is Lori Russo. I am an SUST educator of thirty two years and I'm currently the principal of August School. And I'm here to refute the perception of the PLC conference as a big party. I have taken two site teams to Las Vegas to the PLC conference. The last, I think, believe was in fifteen sixteen. Our day starts as soon as the luggage drops in the rooms. We meet in a room, one of the hotel rooms. We have the agenda for the conference. We assign sessions to each other based on passion and desire to go to those sessions daily at the end of the session, even though site team time is not required. At the PLC conference, we would meet in a room again and reconvene. And we would share our learning because we didn't all, we chose to go to different sessions to bring the most information back to our site. We would start talking about the dissemination of that information and what was irrelevant and needed to come back to our our people. And as a site principal using site funds, I knew that money was well spent on the plane both times when I had my staff and colleagues around me. And they weren't talking about entertainment that happened in Las Vegas. They were collaborating and talking about the presentations, working on their slide decks on what they were going to bring back to the teachers when we reconvened in July. That's when I knew it was money well spent. More importantly, we use the PLC process process in fifteen sixteen to build school culture, collective commitments. And we were able to use the PLC profit process with our avid and to build capacity. And in December of two thousand and nineteen, our site became an avid, national avid showcase site. And we did that because we focused on the PLC process way of doing business and put children first. More importantly, this conference also coincides and aligns with our focus professional development. Administrators receive monthly over at the Hilton. It aligns perfectly with that. Furthermore, SUST is not the only site that sends site teams to Las Vegas. When we're there, we see other surrounding districts with site teams there as well. So it is important. And lastly, I could care less if it's in Las Vegas. I'm not really a fan of Las Vegas. I would go to Barstow. I just tried to think that if you're from Barstow, I apologize. I was trying to think of the worst place to have a conference and so Barstow came up. It just so happens it's one of the cheaper PLC conferences to attend. And the time of the year, it's right at the beginning of June when the teachers just get out before they make their summer plans. And it's really important that we refocus and realign.
Next card is from Ms. Sylvia Cantu.
Sylvia Cantu, I am a teacher at George Washington and I'm also on the school site council. On June twenty eight, two thousand and twenty two, the previous board approved the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three school plan for student achievement, which we call the SIPSA for SUST schools receiving Title One funding. There were forty four schools listed, forty four. It seems like a lot, but it is. Not only is PLC important, but it's in our SIPSA, our social school, it's in our school plan. One of them is weekly cooperation for implementation for the PLC process. And not only that, it's in our STA contract, six article six point five collaboration. The district and association's goal is to develop and implement PLCs driven by the four essential questions of the PLC model. What is it we want our students to learn? Two, how will we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when students don't learn it? Four, how can we extend and enrich the learning for students who have demonstrated proficiency? This is to help. We have a lot of brand new teachers, a lot. On this one right here, there are forty two sites. It's just simple. It could have been individually, but people see the one million dollars. By the way, it is individually set. Each, why would each principal have to turn one in when it can just be set easily like we did the SIPSA? And it's just not teachers. It's it's a hundred and ten non school sites. Those would include your Those would include your special education department and the language development office. Like I said, it's just different sites. At my site at Washington, there'll be 14 people. We have a resource teacher. We have three brand new teachers that we meet and talk about PLCs. Not only is PLC important, but it's part of your LCAP. If you look on the LCAP of Section 1.6, 2122, Teacher Collaboration, Professional Development, the district thought that they were going to plan for $12,655,522. They actually spent $13,878. And this year, it's also in the 2223, and this time they budgeted $16 million. So like I said, the money is not coming from ESAR funds or any, it's coming from our own school site that parents who are on school site decided and everything else. And if you look on, like I said, on LCAP, Additional Supplemental Educator Development and Implementation of PLCs, these additional services are based on identified need are intended to increase or improve professional development for school site administrators, teachers, and instructional staff focused on these best practices. So if it's good enough for our SIPSA, it's good enough for our LCAP. Why isn't it good enough for some people? Anyways, thank you very much for your time. Like I said, I was speaking as a school site member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment card is from Mr. Hartbridge Chima.
I would also like to add my support for bringing the podium back. So again, this is a conference attended by other districts. Around 500 staff and teachers will be going, averaging the cost about 2,000 per person. And the SUSD Board used to send people in the past, and conferences like this allow our staff to better serve our students. But since 2009, Time's was so concerned about this $1 million possibly being misspent, why don't we talk about $60 million? Earlier, trustees Luetta said that perhaps concerns over how ESAR funds were spent were overblown. After all, we have only spent 60 million so far. There's another 170 million left to be spent. But that 60 million was spent at many times inappropriately under your leadership, under the leadership of former President Cecilia Mendez, Vice President Zulueta, and former Clerk Rico. And it was spent inappropriately at the peak of the COVID-19 crisis, when our kids needed the most help, when they needed the most protection from catching COVID-19 and keeping their parents and their families safe, when they and our staff needed the most help to transition online and to address the learning loss that COVID was inevitably going to cause. And how many people got sick because our schools still lack good air filtration systems? How many students are never going to recover from educational damage caused by your former leadership? Why did it take until today, under new leadership, to finally hold a meeting to discuss how we're going to spend ESAR funds, how they were spent, what the appropriate uses are, and how you're going to engage with the community to figure out how we're going to spend it going forward? There are other districts I've been transparent about ESAR funding since the very beginning. Again, these are one-time funds. This money will not always come to our district. And $60 million has already been spent. I want to ask, is that a small amount of money to you, trustees Luetta? Is that additional money you think our schools get every year? That money was supposed to go towards helping kids that are the most vulnerable, including those from low-income families, English learners, students with disabilities, and students experiencing homelessness or in foster care. It's a trend with the former leadership. They mismanaged the money. Then luckily for them, COLA increases arrive where ESAR funds come in and patch up the holes. Instead of this extra money going to our kids to give them extra services, it's used to patch up the holes that they make in our budget, just so we can maintain the current status quo. Again, to bring this back to topic, I want to reiterate my support for the conference. We have to invest in SUSD workers and our kids, but the now minority and their allies think they can take advantage of our community, get rich off of taxpayer dollars, and they've gotten away with it for a while, but we're going to make sure you stop and pay the consequences. Thank you.
Next comment is for Ms. Brenda Vasquez.
And I'll push the button. I am going to reread it. "After voting no and abstaining from countless items that you stated were illegal, you have listed on this agenda item 6.21, out-of-state travel. You have placed on the agenda the ultimate party crew for sure." We're not just talking about the kids here. 542 administrators and faculties to go and live it up in Las Vegas for a whopping $1,114,894. Help me understand what you and Tracy discussed as you place this item on the agenda. How will Area 2 community respond to this outrageous expenditure? Is this your idea of how ESAR funds should be used? I get it. You're taking care of the people that you, that put you in your seat at the expense of our students. You consistently have critiqued previous board presidents for placing items on the consent item. Are you trying to lie to the public by hiding this million-dollar expense? You have told your fellow board members and community members that you are now the boss and you can do what you want. Yes, I heard it myself at last meeting. Please clarify yourself, self-proclaim transparency to us. I'll be sitting here waiting. And he talked about COVID. President Cecilia and Mr. Ray was not on the board president or vice president in 2020 when COVID started. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment card is from Dr. Angela Pasqual.
Good evening, board. I would like to speak to 6.21, especially for our new teachers who we owe the right to have sound professional development. When I joined the district in 2016, I immediately was told by my fabulous principal, Lori Rizzo, you're going to PLC training. PLC training was not part of my contract, as my contract ended at the end of May. So I had to take my personal time and attend the PLC training in Las Vegas. While I was on Allegiant Airlines, you guys booked us on a plane that didn't really have brakes. We all had to like stop it. But I was like, oop, I said, oh, boy. But when we touched down into the hotel, we saw hundreds of teachers from the district, hundreds of teachers from surrounding districts and other states. The spirit of collaboration was in the room, and this old-time educator got in the groove. We were not allowed to go out and just party. We checked in by 7:30. Classes didn't end until 5:00. Lori pulled us back in from 6:00 to 7:00, and most of us, my age, we were sleeping up the next day. So it is not a big party, but we owe it to our new educators to partake in training without being demonized for wanting to get better at their trade. PLC, if you want to see it work, come to see August. August teachers recited upon a writing goal for our schools, that our students will increase their ability to write across the curriculum. We have evidence that it is working. When I work with a new teacher and some teachers that are in the middle of their career, we sit in a room, we plan around writing, we get on our cell phones, we FaceTime with a teacher at Edison, who says that prompt might not work. You need to make it more rigorous by adding this phrase. We reach out to teachers at Chavez, say, use these additional articles since we want them to pull textual information for more than one article. You need to go back and take a look at that strategy. You need to go back and look at how you can use this rubric to systematically and in a standard way assess student learning and writing. Just before we saw this come up, and we had just shared with Lori how excited we were that our eighth graders and seventh graders had made leaps and bounds in their writing because we gave up some autonomy in our classroom and implemented instruction in a consistent manner. That's what the PLC process adds to our educational system. And so I would hope our trustees can get out to the schools to see it work, because it does work when it's instituted in a consistent manner. In my work in another part of education, if you want to attract teachers here, because many of us are five years and out, you have to provide them with a sound foundation to stand on. This is one of those foundations. And no, we won't be partying it up because Brian and Lori work us to the bone. They do. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, we have two common cards for item 14.1. There is a public hearing in this item, and we'll call for these two speakers during the public hearing steps. This concludes public comment cards for item 5.1. Thank you.
Wow. Moving on to item 6.1, which is approval of consent items, and Abby will read the oral announcement.
Does any trustee have any item they would like removed for separate consideration as an action item? After any items are removed for separate consideration, there will be a vote on the consent items without any discussion. Thank you.
Okay, President Flores would like to pull items 13, what was it? Hold on. Yeah, was it 13.5 and 13.6? So just pull that one completely. And then I would like to pull Oh. Yeah, but this is not where I could pull items, right? At 6.1? Okay, okay. So then, in that case, I want to pull 6.12 for discussion, 6.27 for discussion, and 6.21 for discussion. Colleagues, do I have anybody else who would like to pull any items off the agenda for discussion?
Trustee Rico?
Go ahead.
I was to pull the same items that you're pulling, so no, not anymore. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the rest of the consent item. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Luetta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the motion for discussion for 6.12.
Make a motion.
All second. Okay, Tracy, you want to go ahead and discuss this item, please?
Sure. So this particular group, it has been, my understanding, that I think it's been many years since Stockton Unified has had a group advocating for us at the state level and that our voice, we are the largest school district in this area, and that when there are important policy and important decisions being made at the state Capitol, that Stockton Unified has been left out of those conversations because we have not had a voice, we've not had someone advocating for us. And so with this group, it is a way for us to make sure that in years to come, that Stockton is being put on the map, so to speak, and that the work that we are doing is getting recognized. We also have the ability to be kept up to date on budget things before it comes out. We have the ability, our board has the ability to work together on advocacy projects and ensuring potential funding that is coming our way. I think we saw an example of that when Biden did not declare San Joaquin County a national disaster, and it was Representative Harder that said, wait a second. And those are the kind of things that we can get our voice out directly when things happen at the national level so that Stockton is not left out of those important discussions. So I did bring this forward. This was a group that is well-known in the area. They presented at CSBA, and they do work across the state of California for different districts. And I brought it forward because I believe it is time for Stockton Unified to have a voice at the Capitol when policies, procedures, new start times of school, right? That those things that we have input instead of decisions getting made without us getting that input.
Can I have the microphone, Madam President?
Yes.
I'm very happy that you bring this item. In 2004 and 2006, in that time, 2006 around there, Antonio Amato came around, and he hired, I remember, an African-American young man, and he went lobbyist. And he did bring a lot of data from CSBA. I was a parent by then. I was a parent. My children, they were in Marshall. And I remember Dr. Small, also praised this guy, Dr. Small, I remember him, very smart young man. But thank you, this is a very good thing. I think then our district, our integrity needs to be up there, and they can give us the updates and bring us very good data. Very well done. Thank you, Tracy. Very well done.
So yeah, I just want to thank the community for noticing that and calling us out on that. This is something that I actually really do support. Our role up here is previous leadership and board, just in years beyond. In my opinion, of being around for 25-plus years, I've always wondered what our role is up here and what are we really doing at a state level and at a national level? And our new board members are going through training to really understand our role. And I've always been a critique, critical person when it comes to our role as board members and what we do with our roles, right? And so I always said, we need to be at the state level. We need to be advocating for our teachers. We need to be advocating for our classified staff, for all of our staff, right? Because there's a lot of decisions that are being made at the state level that come down and trickle down to local board members and districts without really any word or input or voice. And so when we talk about teacher pay and what they really deserve, we don't have any control always about how much their pay is. So that means we all have to gather together as board members and take it down to the state and say, help us, give us more money. We need to advocate. We need to be up on policies. We need to be up as to what is affecting us nationwide, statewide. There's a lot of issues, and I think this is a good way to get us in the room and have a loud voice. And I'm very confident in our current board leadership that we will not take advantage of our funding, that we will not take this contract or this partnership with this group lightly, that we will be coming back to you, and we will be reporting back to you on issues that are being affected to our district regarding to budget, policies, laws. There's a lot of stuff that our role is where it should be. Thank you.
Trustee Rico?
Go ahead.
So Mrs. Miller, can you just help me to understand? I believe that those services have been provided to us through the San Joaquin County of Education, so I'm all right?
No, this is separate. These are folks in Sacramento that are working with our state elected officials daily on education topics. And San Joaquin County, they're not in Sacramento. They're not working daily with those elected officials.
But I understand that is that San Joaquin County of Education have a contract with them already, and they've been providing services through them, to us. Do I correct or am wrong?
I can't speak for San Joaquin County. I can just speak for what the needs of our district are right now and our voice at the table. And Sacramento has been silenced or has not been there. And so I can't speak for San Joaquin County. I can just speak for Stockton Unified.
And for transparency and accountability, we have no problem reporting back to you as how we're moving with this organization, with this group. And if it's not fitting our needs, do we have an option to get out of it?
It's, we pay. It's, we pay until we, yeah, we don't, we don't have an obligation. And in fact, they asked, um, uh, if this were to be approved, they welcome the opportunity to come on a regular basis and give us the latest hot off the press. They welcome us calling, board members calling and saying, hey, this is something that's going on in my neighborhood and, um, we need your help with that. This is what they, this is what they do.
Thank you.
So am I hearing you say that it's, that the contract could, like if we find after six months, it's not working out? Or are we obligated to the seventeen months? I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know that they are, um, very willing to work with us. Hopefully this would be a long term, right? From the standpoint of, um, that they're continuing to give, uh, give Stockton a voice. So, um, I'd have to pull it up off the top of my head. I can't recall.
And, and the types of, uh, support that we'll be getting from them is a type of support that I have gone to with other organizations that I just took it upon myself to go on conferences with other organizations that taught me about policy and, and our roles, um, and advocacy. So now this is where I don't have to always go and find my own support. And also this will allow our new board members to also receive the support that they need, um, on advocacy as well. So the contract states it is.
And I have to admit, this is a very good people. These are very good people. I've been over there, uh, talking to people for everything this district is going through, giving me advice. They're very positive. Um, and they, they, they say it the way it is. They say the way it is and, and I totally support this. And thank you. I see everybody's smiling and happy. Hope you have a great day.
So I was just going to say, trustee Cologne, that under the agreement, it goes from month to month as long as we provide them with thirty days. Yeah. Thank you. They were just sending me that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, go ahead in closing discussion. Uh, can we get a roll call vote?
Student Representative Abby Welker?
She left already, Christina. She has a, a long day tomorrow, she said.
Thank you. Uh, President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
I'm staying.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, moving on to six point two seven. Two one.
I make a motion?
My second. And I'd just like to point out. Where are we? Yeah. Where'd it go? When it says prepared by, it says prepared by Brian Beederman. It says reviewed by Dr. Susan Aramides. And then approved by Dr. Tracy Miller. Let me remind you, Brian Beederman is our Director of Educational Services, who has many, many, many years and is highly respected and the dedication that he has to our district. Dr. Susan Aramides, if you look, is our interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, who also has a doctorate and has been doing a good job as far as, um, bringing information to us. Dr. Tracy Miller is our interim superintendent, who has also have many, many years with our district. Now, we may disagree about personalities or anything like that. However, the experience is here. We've heard many comments from teachers and staff about the support of this. And, um, I also have Brian, who is ready to come up and speak on how we came to this, uh, conference for the support that we need for our teachers. And if we can spend millions of dollars on illegal contracts, I have no problem approving a million dollars to support our teachers who serve our students in the classroom, day in and day out.
Just a point before Mr. Beederman, uh, this is not S R funds. Earlier, it was pointed out that these are S R funds. These are Title I funds, uh, coming from our school site. So, this is totally separate and just as before Mr. Beederman, we need to support our, our, our staff. So we talk about being college and career ready and the same people, um, that will put the district down will be the same people that would not want for us to invest in our district. We must invest in our people. Um, th- this is a valuable resource. Other people who are teaching our kids every single day. And if a million dollar contract means that we move forth, then those are things that we need to move forward with. Um, and if you know historically, if you look at the SIPSA's, this is in the SIPSA. When I read my school site SIPSA, every principal is asking for P L Cs for their school site, for their teachers. They want to invest back into their school community. The other thing is that historically, we've done this for years. You can put in P L C into the district website and these will pop up year after year after year outside of twenty twenty only because it was COVID. So we should do our research before we attempt to talk against the district and what we do to be a viable asset, um, to our school site and to our students moving forward.
Now, Brian, can you explain why we have it all as one, but that this and how the funding is really coming out?
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, good evening, uh, Board President, Vice President and Board, uh, Trustees and Dr. Miller. Uh, yeah, this was, this, we could have sent forty-two separate board agenda items to you, one by each school. We wanted to package it at one, to streamline the process and to protect our principals as far as not having to be here. And the equity and just the language is all the same. It's one. Uh, so that's why we, we put it as one. Uh, and I appreciate, before I get into it too much, I appreciate the board study session earlier because the more opportunities that we have that for our community, for our community, the easier these conversations are when we're talking about funding sources and school site councils, because this is Title I money. Title I money that has to be spent on professional development. We're not taking this money away from anything else but P D. Every single one of our schools, all fifty-six, are saying that they're going to use the P L C process to move their data. Every single one. Now, there's only forty-two here, uh, but, um, we, we may have some subsequent, uh, B A Is down the road if the other ones opt in. This is an opt-in. We surveyed our, our principals. They told us that they want to go to the P L C coff- conference. We're not forcing them to do it. Now, of the five hundred plus people that are going to this conference, a large majority of them are teachers. We do not have access during the year right now with our sub shortage to take teachers to conferences. We cannot. So we have to wait until the summer. And then this, and again, I wish it wasn't in Las Vegas. It's just, it is where it is. It's been there for, I don't know, twenty years. We have taken teams there. It is an extremely valuable training. And if someone asks in the study session, how are we going to get back to some sort of normalcy or how are we going to catch up on our learning loss? This is the mechanism that our principals and our teachers are telling us on how we're going to get back or how we're going to catch up. All right. It's about not buying stuff. It's about human capital development. How are we investing in our people to do the work? And do different work because COVID has really changed things. And so is the P L C process. If you look at the training offerings that they have, it's a lot of it is for, um, social emotional learning and getting adults to focus on that and, and redefine education in the classrooms. We can't just assume our teachers are going to do that by themselves. We have to build it for, and send them to them and provide it for them. So that's part of the process. Um, and, and I think, I don't know, maybe, uh, we convoluted it a little bit, um, as far as the one agenda item. And, uh, and like trustee, um, excuse me, President Flores said, the educational service team built this board agenda item, nobody else. We built it because we believe in it. We built it because our principals are telling us this is what they need to move their data. It would be a shame on us if we did not. And if that gets me a little political heat because my name is on the agenda, that's fine, uh, because we believe in the process. That's how I moved my data at Edison. That's how Lori moved her data at, um, August. That's how Tamara, Josh and Joe moved their data at their respective sites because they used the process and they implemented it with fidelity. Now, right now, our principals are getting training and assistant principals once a month from our consultant. We have a five-year strategic plan. We've never had that before. As we are building this out to make sure that we are spending money and we have return on investment based on what our data looks like. This isn't just, oh, we're going to go to a conference and come back and do nothing with it. It is built in their SIPSA. It's built in our strategic plan. And that's how we're moving our, our data forward.
Can I have the microphone? Uh, yes, one second. Uh, and then I just want to, uh, comment that shame on anybody who tries to turn this around and paint it as a false narrative. If you are a parent and you have students in S U S D, you would want your teacher to have this training. You would want your teacher to be qualified to work with your students in the classroom. So we will not allow anybody to come into our house and take this narrative and paint it in a bad light. We care about our kiddos and nobody is going to come in and take that from us.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Mr. Beederman, I have a call for, uh, maybe two, three young teachers. What is the chances if they cannot go because of the COVID nineteen and, you know, sometimes, you know, they don't want to be with a big crowd? How they, they're going to get help? How they're going to bring this to them? Do you know, take them under the wing? That's my question.
That's a good question because, uh, there are some teachers that are avoiding large gatherings, large conferences. Uh, Solution Tree who got, who runs PLCs, they are aware of that as well. They do have virtual options as well. Um, and it's not, and, and it's not just June. June's just a, that's one conference. There are several conferences throughout the year. Uh, but if you look at the PLC website, just like A- Avid and any other, uh, organization, they have virtual options for people that do not want to travel live yet. Um, but that is there for them as well throughout the year. It's not just in June, but it's throughout the year. Our biggest concern is finding opportunities where teachers can attend either live or virtual without the sub shortage concern.
Madam President, can I ask him another question?
Mr. Beederman, how's the chances that you can bring these, uh, T L C coming over here to Stockton and bring it to all of them? That way people will have a chance. What do you think? It will be a, a chance for the future or what do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we do it now for our principals because it's easier to release a principal that's not attached to a classroom. There's no sub required. So we do bring consultants to us. We just haven't had an opportunity with the sub shortage to bring a consult. We have brought PLC, uh, consultants in the past over the summer and large groups of, uh, uh, people attended. But again, this is a site determining through their school site council and through their community input, that is okay to send people to a conference. Uh, but we do have that opportunity as well. And we are currently, um, in contract with Solution Tree to have our principals receive that P D here.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
And I, I look forward to the presentation when you guys come back, um, to let us know like exactly, uh, how your experience was. Ms. Rizzo, I love that you pull them in and you still meet and you group them up together. Keep that up. Um, uh, Ms. Pasquale, I like that you guys team up and, uh, you guys, you know, you take this course, I take this course. That is teamwork and, and hold us accountable as board members too, because we go to conferences too. Right? And we need to be coming back to you and reporting what workshops we went to as well. And I know that I've done that. Every time I come back from a conference, I usually exceed my three-minute limit because I'm usually the only one who has a report back of all the workshops that I went to. And so, um, it is something that I've discussed with board leadership that when we as board members go on conferences, that we start reporting back to you too. Right? Um, and for example, we had a conference, uh, for new board members for the CSBA conference. We sent a former board member who did not attend one workshop. We have other board members who had nothing to report when they came back. I didn't see them in a workshop. So if we're going to call you guys out, I expect you guys to call us out the same way. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Oh, you have more to add?
Yeah, I would just like to offer that there are specific breakout sessions at Solution Tree PLC conferences for trustees. So if you were able to come, and I would offer that to you, uh, and say that, and that's for most of our conferences. So you can see it firsthand. We can talk about it all night. Uh, and, and till you see it and you experience it and you are also building your capacity with the number one priority in our district. This is the thing that we're spending money on to move our data. So if that's something that, uh, I would extend, like, that could be interesting to you to attend so you can see what it is. It's not a party in Vegas. You can see the valuable learning and what's going on there and, and build your own capacity as we lead this work as a team, uh, together. So I mean, I, I throw that out to you if that's something you guys are interested, that's available.
Trustee Flores, can I have a floor?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, as a board member, I just wanted to say that, uh, we all as a para S U S D, we are all blessed to be, uh, had those conferences, those trainings, to find out and to get resources to bring back to our, our students. But to be honest, um, I just wanted to, um, let you guys know that I am a little bit sad because, uh, I received, um, information about one, some, some on my sides from E L students. Like I say, Franklin had five hundred and thirty students E Ls. And only, only one, one hundred and ninety being reclassified. So, yes, I'm blessed with you guys to go take those, this conference. I really, I really love to you guys go. Get all the resources that you guys can and bring it back. And yes, provide to those students who are, they really need the support that they need.
Is that, excuse me, point, 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 uh, clarification? Is that related to the PLCs? Do you guys take, do you guys take those types of workshops at the PLCs?
There are specific breakouts at the PLC conference for E L strategies and implementation. And if I was Franklin with a high E L population, I know Principal Lottie would probably send team members to those particular sessions. Yeah.
So, uh, another thing that I want to suggest to the new board members is, yes, ask for those, uh, percentage from the students. And let's find out a way to, we can help those students as a board members. Because sometimes we just focus in issues that we don't, had nothing to see with the students. Our students is below standard, whether they stay required. And this is really sad. What are we doing for those students? We need to work as a team. I think it's time to all get together and work as a team to get those supports for those students. Thank you so much. You, trustee Flores?
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
President Flores?
Thank you, Brian. Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, go for it and bring it back.
Okay, moving on to six point two seven, uh, approval of a half-day arts integration consultation between San Joaquin Office of Education and S U S D during the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Good evening, trustees, President Flores, Vice President Stevens, uh, Dr. Miller. Uh, yeah, I just want to clarify what this is. Um, this is not a, uh, this is not a new position for, uh, for an arts position here with, uh, with the block grant and Prop twenty-eight passing. What, what I did was I met with district leadership and S T A first, just to kind of lay out what we were going to do as far as involving how to set up the plan to move forward with spending the funding. Also, I've been meeting with, uh, special coordinator Cynthia Wildman, uh, Art Coleman, Chris McCoy of Edison. I've been meeting weekly with them. So what we do is we look at their money, what they've already planned to spend. And then as we're moving forward with the, with the team to plan for what we're going to do with the arts block grant and the, uh, the, the Prop twenty-eight money, it's already changed with the, uh, with the grant. The, the money's already gone down. So here's where the county comes in. We want to make sure that we are spending our money correctly. And there's only, it's only, uh, four sessions of four hours. It's about two thousand dollars. So we're, and it's from the block grant. So we're not spending district money on it. What we're doing is we're making sure that when we spend our money and the, and the wish list that they've given me, I want to make sure that our district is fiscally responsible. So when we're spending that money, we are spending it legally and we don't have to give any of it back.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Um, I'm sorry, I'm very observant of our public response. And so you can go ahead and thank you, Mr. Martinez. I would like to call up Cindy, please.
Thank you so much for calling me up. First of all, I would like to say I have met one time with Mr. Martinez. The team has met one time. We have not given him any wish lists. And his information is incorrect. I would also like to say that- I would also like to say that this grant, it was written by Create California. It I have attended meetings with the state already regarding this grant and have a lot of information. We can also talk with Mr. Richard Woodard about this grant. So we have people in this district that know how to spend this grant.
Thank you. So I have a question, Mr. Wildman. How would you like to spend the grant? So what does that look like for you as being the VAPA coordinator?
Well, I'm so it has been told and I have told people that I was looking to retire this year. For 25 years, I have done nothing but try to get arts money. Prop 28, I even got signatures for that. Prop 28 says that 1%, so you look, you look at the whole arts education budget. I'm not arts, the whole state education budget. You take 1% of that number and now the state has to find that number to give the districts across the state to hire arts teachers to teach music, dance, theater, and visual arts. We now have to have arts teachers. Arts, the Arts Block Grant was initially to help get a new curriculum for when we got new standards in 2021, 2020, just pre-COVID or during COVID. So that money is to, as it says, arts, music, instructional discretionary grant. That's to buy curriculum, that's to buy different things to for the arts. With Prop 28, it is now to help set up things for these new teachers that will be coming to teach the arts. That's how I'd like to see it spent. And my understanding, you can talk with Dr. Richard Woodard about it as well. That's how the money needs to be spent.
Okay. Why don't we, I'm going to give directive to our superintendent to have a meeting with Mr. Martinez and Ms. Cindy to let's work together. Okay? And let's pull it for now. And after you guys meet, we'll talk about it. And then you guys can come back to us and let us know what compromise we can come up with. How about that? Thank you.
Just a point order, Madam President. I think at this point, we have to vote it down. We can't pull it.
So we'll vote it down and then we can bring it back. So that's fair.
Or you can either table tight, table item till a date certain, for example, till the next meeting and in the interim direct staff to confer on the matter.
Okay, and I would like to motion to table this matter for a later board meeting. Next board meeting?
I'll second it.
Let's work together, guys, right? We're here to be together with the kids. I'm all about peace. And then we want to make sure that it's noted for the vote that there was no discussion. Right?
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a motion to table.
Uh huh.
At first, a second, and then a vote.
A vote. So we'll call vote. President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I got the gavel. Just kidding, okay? Moving on to and have some fun, right? All right. 8.1, we have a public hearing on Stockton Unified School District Sunshine Proposal to United Stockton Administrators USA for 2022 to 2025 Successor Negotiations. Open public hearing. And now staff report. Hey, no staff report. Public testimony? Nope. Trustees comments? No trustees comments? Closing public hearing. One more time. 8.2, Public Hearing on United Stockton Administrators USA Sunshine Proposal to Stockton Unified School District for 2022-2025 Successor Negotiations. Going to open public hearing. Staff report. Public testimony. Trustees comments?
Are there no staff reports?
The question is why? Wendy, do you have anything you want to?
Actually, I was moving just to the state that were the for 8.1 in regards to the district. Correct, I meant to speak during 8.1, but 8.2 to clarify though, yes, that is USA. It is their proposal to us of what items they are sunshining. So we would not have a report on their items to us.
Just want to confirm, no trustees comments? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Moving on to item 10.1, Board Committees Reports. We will go ahead and start with, sorry. Beef. Board Committee Reports. Abby will read the oral announcement and announce each board committee for a report. And Christina will be the timekeeper, three-minute limit per report.
This is the opportunity to hear any reports from board committees specifically regarding prior or upcoming committee meetings. There will be a three-minute limit per report. First committee is the City of Stockton Parks and Recreation Committee by Trustee Donald Donaire.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trustee Donald Donaire. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting Notes. Sadly, I did not get to attend this Monday. I had mixed it up with the 1852 Foundation Committee Meeting, but I was able to watch it online. So to access previous meeting agenda minutes and video of the meeting, you can go to City of Stockton website. On the tab, it's your government and then online meetings and then board commissions. So some updates, we did elect new officers. So the new president is Spencer Lockwood. And the new vice president for the Parks and Rec Commission is Vice President Virtue Aurora. Their term is for one year from January 2023 to December 2023. So a report on the parks concerning the storms close. Stockton Parks had a close due to large trees coming down, 72 fallen trees from different sizes, large sizes, like the ones in Oak Park and smaller trees throughout the the city. Another update is that the Parks and Rec Commission is going to be doing a celebration of Alicia Reinaga, who passed away last year. They're going to do it later in February and that's going to be announced next month. They're also doing improvements in the Brotherhood Park in Southside. They're waiting for a safety inspection before they reopen. And more on the storm updates, there were three flooded playgrounds in the city of Stockton. Van Busker Golf Course, Matty Harold Park was one of those parks that were damaged. December 7th, Tribley Park Tree Planning Event went really well. Many at the school program students, arborists and communities came out. That's been paid by the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. There will be another tree planning event in January at the Brotherhood Park. And that will be open to community and volunteer organizations. So that will be announced. That will be announced the next meeting, which will be in February. That's all I have for Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is San Joaquin County School Boards Association Executive Committee by Trustee Donald Donaire.
I have no report this time.
Thank you. Next is Three by Three Committee by Clerk Sofia Cologne.
Nothing to report at this time or meetings in March.
Thank you. Next is 1852 Foundation Committee by Vice President Canita Stevens.
Thank you. So we met this Monday. We actually had an amazing meeting. So the 1852 project is really looking at building itself out. We no longer want to be in a foundation where we're only earning $2,000. We actually want to make sure that we are supporting our college students when they go off. So we're looking to add on to an alumni piece so that when our students go off to college, we can support them, whether it's with food and securities, if they're looking for a plane ticket back home, if they can't afford it. We want to make sure that when we talk about being college and career ready, that we really put that support behind that career and college piece. So we met on Monday. We did have a full house, myself, and I'll also let I'll yield some of my time to Donald and Sofia. They were also in attendance. So we're really looking at building it out. We do have close to, I want to say, $200,000 already there. We received $114,000 from Dr. Mark Haggaman. Many of you remember him in his past and he actually granted us a lot of money, which was really amazing that he really thought about Stockton Unified because of his love for education. So the bulk of our money actually came from Dr. Haggaman. We're looking at about $30,000 usually. But we want to build that out in order to support our kids. We know that we really want to do a lot better. So I've been talking about 1852 every step of the way since Monday. Today, I got a lot of people who really want me to build those connections with businesses and organizations so we can begin to fundraise and really make sure that we support our kids, college and career ready. And I'll yield my time over to Donald and Sofia if they want to add anything. If not, I can keep it going.
And I was just going to agree, it was a good meeting. We really got an in-depth overview of of the foundation. We're going to take that time to review the bylaws to really make sure that we're we're using the money the way that it's intended and to fine tune those things. And I'm just as I'm just as excited to to be able to continue to support our students and our teachers with with these funds.
I also just want to thank Mr. Willie Gutierrez and Ms. Melinda Mesa for the the presentation on communications and for the for the fiscal update. We're another update that I took away from that meeting was that recent, in the past, we've only met or the 1852 Foundation would only meet, is it quarterly? And now we're going to move it to a monthly so that more people can be a part of those conversations.
Applications are open, so please tell your school sites, your teachers, if they're looking for additional funds to support their students' education, whether it be inside the classroom or outside. We do have funds available. We would just need for them to fill out the application and make sure that that gets over to Ms. Mesa. And then we'll go from there. But we look forward to the next meeting, which will be February 27th at 5:00 here in the boardroom.
Okay, that concludes 10.1 for Board Committee Reports. We can move on to item 10.2, which is Brief Reports on Trustee Activities. I started on my left last board meeting, so I'll start on my right today.
Hi, everyone. This is Trustee Donald Donaire. I want to start off that this Saturday, there was a North Valley Labor Federation Training for new school board members. I learned a lot more about the Brown Act and some other legal assistance that we we asked them to do. So they they do this monthly and then we tell them, you know, what kind of trainings that we would like to see. And then they come back and invite us again to their office in Manteca. So this morning, I also attended the Business Education Alliance hosted by CTE. It was really good breakfast. It was many presentations by students and their educators on some of the things that they're working from medical assistants to graphic design. It was really cool. I also want to share that I just want to apologize to my Area 5 schools. I'm still reaching out. I do plan on emailing and contacting the principals, education leaders, student staff, just so I can learn more about their schools and some of the issues that they want to see change. And then lastly, it's really hard to share, but I want to give my heart out to the victims and survivors of the recent attacks this weekend in Monterey Park, Half Moon Bay, and Oakland. Since the COVID pandemic, anti-Asian racism and violent attacks have been on the rise as well of as well as acts of gun violence. As you all know, Stockton just celebrated or recognized, sorry, the 34th anniversary of the Cleveland School Elementary Shooting. So I think it really should matter to us that we have these conversations with our students and with our staff and really fight against, you know, anti-Asian racism. So I'd like to ask the board cabinet and the SUSD community present here tonight to just take a moment of silence. Thank you so much.
Trustee Clerk Cologne?
Thank you, everyone. My name's Sophia Cologne, clerk, clerk to the board. Thank you so much, Donald, for for that heartfelt reminder. I just want to noted down a few notes here just to kind of get gather myself. Over the weekend, I had a chance to meet with some parents. It's the first in a series of monthly coffee talks that I'll be holding in my area, in Area 6. And I was really excited to get back to talking with folks with a couple of parents here, just hearing, just hearing their experience and just gathering their feedback. Now, you know, the questions were theirs to ask of me and and it was just, you know, giving some of my feedback and just really listening. So I'm excited to do that again next month on the 18th. And I, in the back on the table there, I I had made some bookmarks that have my social media contact on there. One, I I just advocate for reading all ages, right? You got little ones or you're an adult, you know, whether it's a book, a magazine or something, just I encourage everyone to read. And so you can grab one of those bookmarks. And on my social media, I'll be posting where the next coffee talk will be. But it will be on February the 18th between 8:00 and 9:00 in the morning. I also attended the training with NVLF and just all the learning, right? As a new trustee, there's so much to learn and to be aware of and try to keep it top of mind. These trainings are helpful to me and just knowing that, you know, professional development is something that we all support. So I I appreciate that for myself and I and I encourage that for others. So this this week, I'm excited to go see some schools. I've had some, you know, rearranging with my schedule, juggling work and being in this new position. I think I've got it down across my fingers. So I'm looking forward to visiting school sites on a regular basis. So thank you.
Go ahead, Vice President. I'll go last.
So I just want to shout out the CTE program to Nathan and Krista this morning. They did an amazing job showcasing the work of our schools and our students who are really, they they have some amazing pathways for our students, whether you are college or career bound. Stockton Unified has options for our families. And I think that is a huge piece of what we do. There was a lot of excitement in the room. I think Dr. Miller said the only thing that we forgot to do was pass the offer and play because we really could have made some money this morning after everything that went forth. So thank you, Nathan, for the work that you do. We just want to make sure that we lift you all up. To Krista, I don't think she's in the room today, but you all did amazing representing the school sites. Also had the opportunity, you know, being a board member is a lot of work. Like, if you really want to be a good board member, it's a lot of work. So I too went to the NLVF training, NVLF training on Saturday, learning more about Robert's Rule of Order because there is a lot to learn, right? You don't want to get yourself in any trouble by doing something. You don't want to get yourself in any trouble by doing something that you should not do, whether it's intentional or whether it's on accident. Also had the opportunity to connect with the extended cabinet on this morning. Some great work coming out of Stockton Unified. Jason Murphy talked about the data this morning about reclassification of our EO students. We know that's important. If our students are looking to go to college, then they must be reclassified, right? So that's extremely important. I know you talked about that. That's one of your passions, is to make sure that we're reclassifying our students. And that should be all of our passion, to make sure that all of our students have opportunities to be successful in life. He also talked about graduation data. That was you, right, Jason Murphy, this morning? Okay, because I heard a lot this morning. Okay. So also our graduation rate, making sure that our students are excelling, that's really hot stuff. It is more important for me to talk about that stuff than to do some of the other stuff. Showing up to make sure that we have good policy is extremely important to ensuring that we move our district in the right direction. I'll yield my time because I know it's far spent this evening.
Trustee Rico.
Good evening again, and thanks for attending this meeting. I just want to start with maybe a question. So I contacted yesterday the director from the van at Franklin High. So I sent emails and I didn't receive any answer back. So I don't know who I had to refer to send this email. So this is about the order for Franklin van since last year, and she told me yesterday that she don't have, she don't hear anything about it yet. So you guys can help me with that? I really appreciate that. And also, I was part, I was part of the meeting for the special ed. And I love the way the, I can recall his name, but he talked about the requirements for our graduation from the special ed. I was so excited, so excited that I believe this is the first time for students for a special ed being counted. They've been excluded for so long, and I believe this is the first time that I can say, we're working for it. We're doing what they deserve. And hopefully, we can go, we can stop here. Hopefully, we can go getting more resources for those students. They deserve. They have the same right that other students. If we start looking that way, those students, we can make a difference. With this, our district can be a different from so many districts. Because we're making a difference right now, but because we are excluded, those students for so long. As a parent, I can say that. And as a board member, I had, I had the power to make changes for those students. If I can work together with that board and they can support me, we can make those changes happen. And also, I've been in contact with my principals from my sides through email because lately, I'm not feeling well. And I also want to know, to let in on the community that tomorrow, we're gonna have the Delac meeting. And on the twenty-sixth, we're gonna have the elect at Franklin. And I encourage to all the parents who had those students at those sites to go to those meetings. There is a lot of information so we can get. Thank you and have a blessing evening. Thank you.
Trustee Zulueta.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update. I've been kind of going by my schools and just seeing how the students are doing in terms of seeing how they're interacting when they're out at recess, when they're out at play. Now that the storms are kind of gone for a little bit, it's been an awesome thing to see our students back on the playgrounds and running around and making a lot of noise. It's something that we hadn't seen because of COVID over the last couple of years. So to see our students back and just active on our campuses, despite the different storm stuff that have gone on and the infrastructure stuff that we're dealing with has been probably the most, just the greatest thing that you could see. Our students are getting back into the, just the swing of being students and being children again, and I think that's the most important thing that we could have. Thank you all for being here and have a good evening.
Trustee Mendez.
Yes, good evening. I sit down with some of the parents for Edison High School, concerned about some issues in Edison. I did send that report to my superintendent right now. Also, Marshall, concerns about the driving of the parents going very fast in potholes and parents almost like running each other there. So I want to bring this, you know, I don't call people and bother people, but if maybe, you know, they can send the police to take little rounds in there. Also in TAF, they're jumping to each other. It was very sad to see it, but I waited until today. And I just wanted to say, you know, if you guys can send somebody just in the mornings, it's getting so bad. Also, TAF got flooded from the other side in the corner. Some parents who live in that area, they help each other just to remove the, with bags and everything, clean the area. Also, I wanted to talk about McKinley. It seems to be that we're doing good. The homeless are not getting into the corner and breaking, you know, the chains or anything there. The parents are happy, then things are moving in there. Also, I wanted to talk about, then I have received some complaints about the job program, and I'm allowed to say the name of the parent. She told me, Mrs. Lee and Mrs. Hamah, and they say that the children are not being picked up and they need to be picked up on time. No more late rides. They want their children back home. And also, some of my schools, the children are coming late. So please, you know, I'm begging you, just, you know, the kids are very important. I know that we have bad weather or anything. Let's hire more drivers. Let's think outside the box, maybe incentives. I don't know what else to say, you know? We need to do our job, all of us, and I know that we have a new director, and he's trying hard in that department. I know that he's trying. And just, we have to give him the benefit of that and see what's going on. And the facilities need to be fixed. It's too many areas and they're leaking. And I will hope, you know, then we get more people who work in our district and given the opportunity to climb the ladder. I do believe on that. Anyway, this is all I can say right now, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, trustee Mendez.
Okay, I like to start off with also acknowledging the BEA breakfast for the CTE that was put on this morning. What an amazing job they did. My colleagues here on the board have done a wonderful job of already expressing how great of a job you're doing. So I'm gonna try to utilize my time for other items. Also, I want to, we should have had a resolution. We're kind of a little late, but I was informed that the first week of February is Mental Health Week or Social Worker? Counseling, counseling. So if we can get some support with making sure that we have a resolution designating that. And then we have a request. We need some help from community. You're here. So you guys have lots of questions about the way we're spending money. Bond committee, bond committee. Please submit applications. We need community input. We need you. So please contact our office as soon as possible. We need to get this rolling. Sylvia, I'm expecting you to apply. I'm expecting other community members to apply. Maria, if you want to get on there, like, if I have to call you guys out, then I'm gonna call you guys out, all right? So community members, we need you. Other union members, like, Carisha, you in the room? Okay, all right. We need you guys all. So there's that. And then communications. I'm getting positive feedback from the amount of communications that's coming out. But slack on my end, it should also be in Spanish. So we want to make sure that we're putting out communications in Spanish as well. So Abby, it's been requested that the message that I sent out in English when we first started coming back from the New Year, that it be sent out in Spanish. So if we can get that translated and get that out. And I know I owe some people some phone calls, so I haven't forgot you all. I know that I got to call you guys back and get your voice, so please be patient with me and bear with me. Let's see. And then I just want to reiterate, and we've already expressed this. We are no longer going to be operating under fear, chaos, dysfunction, and intimidation. So we, as board members, do not have the power to come and say that we are going to remove you from your job. We cannot promise you any jobs. That is not our role. And I'm gonna reiterate, that is not our role. If you should receive any uncomfortable requests from anybody that you don't feel qualified to answer, even if that's including us as board members, you are responsible to respond to your superintendent only. That is your boss or your director. I'm gonna go ahead and extend my little time because I think that you guys all really need to know and feel safe in your jobs. Do not fear about losing your jobs because you are talking to a certain board member or you're friends with a board member. That is no longer gonna be in play. So don't respond, period. You don't have to. And as far as board members, we also need to be cognizant of what we put on social media because that could be a violation of the Brown Act. If we are discussing our opinions on issues that public are saying on any social websites, social media websites as well, so forward your concerns over to superintendent, and we are board leadership. So you connect with your board leadership, and that's the way we are going to be moving forward. Thank you.
Trustee Flores, can I add something?
We are actually done, so we're gonna move on. Thank you. Item ten point, where are we at? Ten point three. Approval of minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular board meeting minutes.
Make a motion?
All second. Discussion? I would like to thank the community's input on behalf of our board meeting minutes. And I actually would, I appreciate the recommendation of bringing a resolution back so that we can add a summary. I agree, we should put those who are speaking. If we can't put everything that they said, at least we could put the names of who spoke on those line items. And so if it suits our board, okay, we will go ahead and I would like to put this on the next board agenda to go ahead and start looking at how we put our minutes and publish them. And then I also want to thank the quick response now of the minutes being posted. So that's an improvement. I want to thank those who are doing that behind the scenes. And we're listening. We're listening to you, okay? So this is, we want to make sure that you guys are being heard and we are being transparent. Is there anything else for discussion on this item?
Okay, roll call vote. President Flores?
No.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
No.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point four. Approval of minutes for January sixth, twenty twenty-three, special board meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
All second. Any discussion? My comments echo from ten point three. Roll call vote.
President Flores?
No.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
No.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes five to.
Moving on to item ten point five, renewal of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-five, resolution for former trustee Maria Mendez, compensation for missed special board meeting. Can I get a motion? All motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Already voted for this, so I asked for advice and I'm gonna, just don't vote at all. I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Rico?
Abstain.
Trustee Zulueta?
No.
Motion passes five zero with two abstentions.
That was four. Four two one.
Four two one, I'm sorry.
Item ten point six, renewal of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-six, resolution for trustee Angelin Flores, compensation for missed special board meeting. Can I get a motion?
A motion. All second. Stevens.
Discussion?
Just a comment. Trustee Rico, go ahead. So trustee Flores, I mean, before, she always complained about corruption and transparency. So this is one clear example of corruption for herself. Thank you.
Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
I will have to say this, due to I have
We're just taking vote, ma'am. We already called for discussion and you passed your opportunity for discussion. What's your vote?
Abstain.
Trustee Rico?
No.
Trustee Zulueta?
No.
Motion passes five two with one abstention. I'm sorry, four two with, four two with one abstention.
Item ten point seven, adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash seventy, proclaiming February twenty twenty-three as Black History Month. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Discussion? Thank you, Ms. Stevens, for bringing this forward. Roll call vote, please.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to eleven dot one, interim superintendent's report. All right, I'll keep this short. I think we're all getting a little loopy up here. It's been a long evening. We've been here since, I don't know when, but anyway, thank you for being here, folks. I'm looking at your faces. So thank you for hanging in there. So just excited to hear about, you know, student learning and achievement really is the conversation, is what we're talking about tonight, and that's the focus that we want to keep. I stated this at the last board meeting, but it was a special board meeting and not many folks were here, so I just want to reannounce it because it's super cool. Again, in an attempt to maintain our focus on student learning and achievement, I'm very happy to report out that our, that our research department under Dr. Ramirez and Dr. Murphy's leadership have created a dashboard for all board members to view their area schools with the most recent student learning and achievement data. So we're gonna have a special video for them that they will be able to navigate and get that data that it's in centralized place. So thank you, Dr. Murphy, if you're still in the room. Thank you for that. So we look forward to having that information shared out with our board members. And then we will be having our monthly conversations where we're continuing to engage our community, school community members. That's Area Two at the end of this month. There you go.
And I know it's already been said tonight, but I do want to acknowledge Nathan Haley, our CTE administrator, and Krista, um, our work-based, um, learning coordinator for all of their efforts this past year. It was so exciting to be finally in person with the BEA this morning and had a room full of folks, um, who are excited about Stockton Unified Business Partners that are looking forward to partnering with us. So, um, that was, that was super cool. And then again, I just want to give a shout out to Joanne and Susanna, um, Dr. Ramirez for the presentation earlier and the beautiful book and the plants. Just want to acknowledge, I know that you all did a lot of planning for that and just want to say thank you.
Can I have the microphone?
Go ahead.
I, I was, I would like to say then that was a really nice detail. But I did like very much your presentation than you guys did today. It was a lot of hard work. And thank you so much.
Moving on to item twelve point one, action on Aspire Stockton TK dash five elementary academy request for material revision. Can I get a motion?
Is this is?
Oh, just for information. Do we, uh, I see some Aspire folks in the room. Did you guys want to, uh, we've heard about, it's been presented already, but do you want to add anything? That's what I thought. It's for action, right? So that's why we need a motion and a second. I was right. See?
It has, it has an I in front of it, but it does say action.
Okay. Uh, so a motion?
Well, the agenda item, I guess, uh, I guess the appropriate question would be asked, was it intended to be an action item or merely an informational item, given that we identified with an I?
It was submitted as an. Go ahead and answer, Dr. Ramirez.
It was submitted as an action. We had, um, the hearing at the, not last, but the last before meeting. Um, it is for the board to take action on, um, whether they will agree to the, um, school name from Aspire Stockton TK five Elementary Academy to Aspire Arts and Science Academy.
So Dr. Ramirez, is this purely clerical error, grammatical error from the?
Yes.
So let's go ahead and let the minutes reflect that it was a clerical error. So this way we, um, have clear, um, clearer information for anybody who wants to come back and look at it. So it is an action item. So I will go ahead and motion. Can I get a second?
I'll give a second.
Any discussion?
Yes, is there any fiscal impact on the district with the name change?
The question is, is there any fiscal impact on SUSD for the name change?
No, there is not.
Okay. Any other questions?
No question, but just a comment that, um, you gained, uh, parent and student, uh, input for the names, for the name change. And I think that's appreciated. So I just wanted to, to, to acknowledge that.
Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item twelve point one, approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Stockton Unified Pre-K through twelve course catalog and planning guide. Can I get a motion?
All motion.
Can I get a second? Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item thirteen point one, approval to reinstate two classified management positions and revise the Director of Labor Relations' job description and Deputy Superintendent job description. Can I get a motion? All motion? Can I get a second?
All second, Stevens.
And discussion?
Just on the funding source, so why, why are these two positions coming out of the ESER funds?
That's a clerical error. It's supposed to be general funds.
So did you guys hear that? Uh, this, uh, position was a clerical error. It is not coming out of ESER funds. It's coming out of general fund. Uh, and then I just, I, you guys asked, so we're going to give an explanation, right? And so, um, the reasoning behind this is a, a lot of feedback that we're getting is we don't have somebody that's doing our labor negotiations. And, and it's been difficult to get somebody in that position. And so, um, due to legalities, we have to go through this process. And so that's why we're here at this point because we want to have good labor negotiations with our union family members, right? And, and so that's the reasoning behind that one. We need to get the ball rolling. And then the deputy superintendent, we have a lot of work to do. Uh, from top down to the bottom, from the bottom back up again, there is a lot of work. And it's even been like me, trust me, we, we are like Tracy, where's the information? Where is this? Where is that, right? And she's only one person up here reporting to us. And so she's trying to bring in more people to give her the support that she needs um, so that we can get the information that we need to go ahead and continue moving forward with our vision for our district. So yes, it, it could be a controversial position, but at this stage in the game, we need that backup and we need support. Um, so we are going to be, um, supporting our interim superintendent on that behalf. And if it makes you feel any at ease, these are only going to be interim positions um, as we proceed forward with our superintendent search firm. Um, and, and knowing how, we don't know how it's going to be going forward. So we want to leave an opportunity, um, whether it be Dr. Miller or whether it be somebody else who comes in as superintendent to be able to choose their people. So we don't want to bring in and then have another shift change, right? And we, and, and no, we're not expecting coming and change because I'm a business management major. And you learn, you do not make rapid changes, at least for the first six months. And so we, we don't want, we've already been through so much already. So, and I'm sorry, I'm using my hands. I just found out I'm Italian, so maybe that's it. I don't know. Uh, so, um, just so you guys know, we are really looking at all aspects on how to rebuild our district, how to restore the trust, and how to get results. So, um, bear with us, continue to come and ask us questions. I have no problem with you guys coming and calling us out and asking us why this is a place to, um, to ask and for us to respond. Do I have any additions?
I have a question for legal. So do we need to change the motion to reflect the change from ESER to Title One?
It's in the backup materials. I believe it's a, to general fund.
I'm sorry, general fund, sorry.
Because the motion doesn't identify the funding. The motion is correct. It's the backup materials which has the clerical error which needs to be clarified. And certainly, um, the public statement that it's coming from general fund as opposed to ESER funds provides that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other comments from my colleagues? No? You guys good? Okay, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Abstain.
Trustee Zulueta?
Uh, no.
Motion passes five to one with one abstention.
Thirteen point two, uh, adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash sixty-eight waiver request for a variol, variable term waiver. Can I get a motion? Motion by trustee Mendez. Can I get a second? All second. Discussion? Wendy D, DC Mall, do you have any comments for this?
Um, no comment, but happy to assist if information is needed.
Yeah, we're good. Uh, go ahead, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item thirteen point three, approval of one FTE Senior Program Specialist for the Early Childhood Education Department. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
Can I get a second?
Second, Stevens.
Discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item thirteen point four, approval of a new coordinator admissions of fam, and family services, ECE job description, one dash FTE for the Early Childhood Education Department, and revisions to the SUSD management salary, team salary schedule. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Is this the, uh, management? I want to confirm. Tracy, is this the management one that we're trying to?
Thirteen point four is, is Ms. Suzanne? You want to come up and address this one?
Push. Good mor, good morning, good evening. Thanks for having me. What can I, what can I answer for you?
Can you just give us a brief description, um, and, and I, with comments about management salary? So that's what kind of, I could be looking at this wrong, but can you just explain it, please?
Sure. Um, this is actually a new job description we're bringing forward. And what you're seeing is just the addition of this job description on the management salary schedule. So it, it doesn't actually, um, address any of the, um, management salaries. It's just the addition of it. And the ECE department is bringing this forward because we have forever wished to have, um, someone who could help run our registration department in order to help, um, streamline the system, help families get in and get their appointments quickly and be able to do that follow-up so that we make sure kids get into classrooms in a timely manner. And so, um, we have the funding, so we're bringing this forward tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any questions in regards to that? Thank you. Uh, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Uh, I'm abstaining from this one.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Abstain.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero with two abstentions.
Okay, uh, item thirteen point five. I did pull it, so we got, okay, cool. I was, okay, so thirteen five and thirteen six were pulled. Thank you. Okay, we weren't, they didn't allow me to pull it earlier. I wanted to pull it.
Correct. Uh, it still remains on the agenda as, as.
So. Thirteen point five, approval of a new Director of Expanded Learning Opportunities Program job description, one FTE for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and revisions to the SUSD management team salary schedule. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny it if that works. Do we want to accept it? Because I, I don't want to. Or I'll make a motion to table it if we can table it, but I would rather deny it if that works. But I'll make a motion to table it.
The, the motion is, unless it's an amended motion, the motion now is for approval for which you can vote yea or nay.
I'll motion to approve it, so we.
We would, yeah. I will second that.
Okay, discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, roll call vote.
President Flores?
No.
Vice President Stevens?
No.
Clerk Cologne?
No.
Trustee De Nair?
No.
Trustee Mendez?
No.
Trustee Rico?
No.
Trustee Zulueta?
No.
Motion fails. Yeah, motion passes, uh, seven zero.
It failed.
Failed to fail.
Yeah. You had it right, Christina, the first time. All right, item thirteen point six, approval of new Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP Site Coordinator Job Description for FTE for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and visions to the SUSD management team salary schedule.
I'll motion for this one, too.
I second.
Uh, trustee Zulueta, can you just, um, say the whole statement of what you're motioning?
I'm going to motion to accept thirteen point five, so we could vote it just like the one before. Or thirteen point six, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay, uh, no discussion? Roll call vote.
President Flores?
No.
Vice President Stevens?
No.
Clerk Cologne?
No.
Trustee De Nair?
No.
Trustee Mendez?
No.
Trustee Rico?
No.
Trustee Zulueta?
No.
Motion passes seven zero to fail.
Okay, on item thirteen point seven, approval of the tentative agreement between Stockton Unified School District and California School Employees Association and its transportation, chapter eight eight five.
Make a motion?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Can I get a roll call vote?
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Abstain.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero with one abstention.
Um, I was just reminded of the time. It is nine fifty-eight, so we have to get a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes. I think we can be done in about another fifteen minutes, so.
I second that.
Uh, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustee Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item thirteen point eight, approval of AB twelve hundred Financial Public Disclosure Forms for the Management Team. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to accept.
I second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President uh, Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, fourteen point one. We have a public hearing for the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash sixty-seven of the governing board of Stockton Unified School District approving submission of a waiver request of the bonding capacity limitation to the State Board of Education. I would like to open this up for a public hearing. Can I get a staff report?
Want to report out, Ms. Joanne?
What this waiver is, is we're only allowed to have a two point five cap um, waiver on bonds. We are at, we're going to be over that because of the new bond that was passed. So it's actually a good thing because that means the community is having faith in this with these bonds and they're voting them in, so we need to um, um, increase the percentage so we can have these bonds.
Okay, uh, any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, just would like to say, you know, thank God we passed, passed the bond and I was sure then it was still going to pass. A lot of parents, they were very excited to hope this goes, yeah. Thank you.
Do we have any public testimony?
Yes, trustees, we have two comment cards uh, regarding item fourteen point one. First card is from Mr. Harpreet Chima.
Sorry everyone for making the meeting go even longer. Um, just had a comment on the oversight committees, but thank you trustee Flores for telling everyone to join. And I understand this is a technical issue that uh, has to be addressed, but um, I think people still have, people in the districts have concerns over um, continuing to uh, you know, with vendors and contractors and with extra money being spent. And some urgency on addressing the lack of oversight would be appreciated with the committees. And I understand things need to be um, addressed and fixed with the schools. And from my admittedly superficial understanding of this issue, um, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. Um, I really appreciate the business office continuing to try to correct the budget. Um, it's still unclear whether the county's concerns have been fully addressed and that everyone has a very clear view on what our budget looks like this year and the following years. And I want to just be clear that our budget is in a mess because of former leadership, the concerns that the county has covered timeframe when you three were on the majority. But nevertheless, increasing our district's ability to spend money ahead of schedule, which is what this does, I think will continue to raise red flags in the public until we're all confident that the budget that we're presented is fully accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. And next card is from Mr. Paolo Enriquez.
Um, according to FICM's January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two report, the district lacked a bond oversight committee as required by law, making the expenditure of bond proceeds suspect and potentially unlawful. In response to the report, the board passed resolutions to establish both a citizens' bond oversight committee for measure E and a citizens' bond oversight committee for measure C. And you also passed bylaws for both those committees. But since then, I don't think there's been any activity from either of those committees. You've opened up applications, but I was unable to find anything on board docs showing that you've appointed anyone the, the measure E or measure C committees. So is the district even meeting its legal obligations when it comes to oversight of these measures? And if you don't even have established functioning oversight committees for these bonds, I find it odd and out of place that you are trying to get a waiver to issue bonds that would bring the district's level of bond indebtedness above the two point five zero percent limit regulated by California Ed Code. So with that said, I think it would be wise for trustees to exercise caution in voting this agenda item down. Thank you.
This concludes public testimony for, testimony for item fourteen point one. Thank you.
Trustee comment?
Trustee comments?
Oh, uh, Joanne, can you give us an update regarding the new bond committee, what's happening, where we are, and when you're expecting uh, the committee to be up and running?
We um, received five applications. And I was planning to um, review them with Dale Scott. He's our bond, he's one that's been um, consulting us on the bonds and he helps us with our bond writing. Um, but I think the um, application's still open, so we can have a bigger pool. And then once we get that um, organized, I, I want them to meet every month on that.
Uh, Joanne, can you tell us how would one apply? And are there any requirements?
There's no requirements. The application's online.
On our district website?
Yes.
District website application, and I see Mr. Scott wanting to come up and talk. Thank you.
Good evening, Dale Scott, Financial Advisor District. There is just one um, restriction on the oversight committee, and that is no one can be a member that is an employee of the district or an official of the district or is a vendor of the districts. Um, so such as myself, I couldn't be on the committee, you couldn't be on the committee, teachers can't be on the committee, they have to be independent citizens.
I have a question about the application itself. Um, I received some feedback that it gives that the applicant has to give a lot of personal information. Um, with that feedback, can, can we make some changes to the application, or is it, is that information required?
No, the information is not required. Um, I don't know what the information is you're discussing, but there is no real requirements for that information. I think it's just how to get in touch with the people. Is there a specific number? I know we have a few applications. There a specific number that we're looking for uh, prior to the application closing on uh, January thirtieth?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No worries. Is there a particular number that we're looking for before we close applications on January thirtieth? To be on the committee?
Can you answer? No.
No, there really is no specific number. You want to have a good, solid group of applications, even though you may have more applications than you have positions. People do move, they want, they decide they don't want to be in it, you don't want to have to go through this again. So I think you want to get a solid pool from which to draw on, but there is no requirement as to what that number is.
So uh, directors, admins, teachers, reach out to your parents, community members who show up to talk to us. Reach out and apply, please. Thank you.
Another question about the application, could we get that in paper by chance, or would that make things difficult? For, I'm just, people who don't have uh, internet access by chance.
I can print them and put them on the front desk and they can come by and pick it up.
Again, I don't know if anybody heard, Ms. Joanne, but say that again really loud so they can hear.
I can print the application and have it at the front desk if anybody would like to apply.
Can I have the microphone?
Go ahead.
I would like to thank you, sir. It was a, it was a lot of hard work, but it, it was made it. Thank you so much for your assistance in the bond and, and thanks to all the parents who voted for this. They were very looking into helping our schools. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your work.
Okay, I was just updated. We only got probably seven minutes left. Um, thank you, Mr. Scott. We appreciate you. Um, uh, co- I would like any other comments, so we're going to go ahead and move forward. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, uh, roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Fourteen point two, vendor payment report for the month of December twenty twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second Stevens.
Discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
President Flores?
No.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Abstain.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one with one abstention.
Item fourteen dot three, approval of amendment number one to the lease, leaseback contract with S. Presley James Construction of California Inc. for the Stag High School Gym HVAC and Roof Replacement Project. Can I get a motion?
Motion Cecilia Mendez?
Oh, second Stevens.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Yes.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
Yes.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item fifteen dot one, student expulsions, Z dash fifteen, Z dash sixteen, Z dash eighteen, ZZ dash nine. Can I get a motion?
Motion Stevens?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
President Flores?
Abstain.
Vice President Stevens?
Yes.
Clerk Cologne?
Yes.
Trustee De Nair?
Abstain.
Trustee Mendez?
Yes.
Trustee Rico?
I'm staying.
Trustees Zulueta?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with three abstentions.
Item sixteen dot one, oral suggestions. Abby will announce a number of non-agenda item public comments and request each person to provide their public comment in the order they were received. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, trustees. We have three cards for item sixteen point one. First comment card is for Mr. Harpreet Chima regarding IAQ.
Okay, then I think we might have to extend our meeting for maybe another ten minutes. Oh, okay, go really fast.
Okay, since SR funds being legally and appropriately spent was brought up before, um, there's an issue that the grand jury brought up that so far been swept under the rug. So I want to bring up Alliance and IAQ. The grand jury said they were paid two point nine million in twenty twenty-one. And the California Secretary of State website shows a listing of them. Uh, can we get a conclusion to that little drama there? Um, is there a plan in the future to improve ventilation in our schools? Okay, thank you.
Next comment card is for Ms. Kathleen Castellanos regarding um, last Thursday's meeting and special needs students.
Good evening. Madam President, Board of Trustees. My name is Kathleen Castellanos. I am born and raised in California. I'm a local product of SUSD schools. I attended SUSD schools, so went on to Delta College and graduated. And then went on to San Jose State University and went to school there and came back looking for a job, SUSD. I got hired in November of nineteen seventy-seven. I was a substitute teacher for one year, nineteen seventy-six. I uh, excuse me, I uh, substituted all over local Stocktonian schools. So this is from last meeting. I came and I ran out of time, so I'm going to hurry it up. Uh, I was chosen by Kelly Dexter at the time, Patty White, uh, Tom Whiteside's pr- principal at Walton Special Center. And uh, a couple of other teachers from uh, Stockton Unified School District. I was doing uh, transitioning of students and then my home base was at Walton Special Center. Those were St. Milwaukee Delta College, St. Basil's, Head Start, University Park. And I even did uh, transitioning with Richard S. Pittman. Uh, and also transitioning at Marshall. And um, then I was moved over to Marshall. Uh, first it was Richard S. Pittman, then over to Marshall because Richard S. Pittman became a charter school, so we moved to Marshall. I did summer school, worked there also, then went on to Cleveland Elementary School and worked there at the preschool department. And then I went on from there to transitioning students in the preschool with special ed needs children. And I also uh, continued on. And I always put our students first, always. I was never late, I was always on time, so I've worked forty-six years with the Stockton Unified School District. Um, and my story is that uh, when I moved on to Rio Calaveras, I was put on a ministry and to leave. Um, and I was working, always working with challenging students and working with children in the bathroom. So I was there talking and trying to get one of the students to go to the bathroom. The teacher they were, I worked with saw me need he needing help. Excuse me, didn't have very icon. We're gonna, this first, first, first you're gonna bathroom and then you're gonna do this, so it was uh, excuse me, lack of the icon to show what they were so situation is, um, they were, Stockton Unified School District said, you'll either, you're going to be uh, terminated. Then they gave me the choice to be either terminated or put on um, to resign. I tried to get in touch with er, Tracy Miller, Terry said they didn't allow me to speak to her. Maybe this is something that human resources can help you with, so that's what happened. Time, give your time.
President Flores, I would, I would just like to point out, um, in accordance with ninety-three, uh, twenty-three, your board bylaws uh, indicates that your meetings conclude at ten thirty and shall be extended um, after that, so you
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, uh, Kathleen, I apologize for the way you were treated. Um, and so I'm going to go ahead and direct Wendy to go ahead and talk to you. And then they will go ahead and report back to us on how the conversation went and how we can go ahead and move forward, um, what, what your situation was, okay? You're welcome.
Next common card is for Ms. Carisha Boyd regarding SR funds direct services.
You gotta push that button. Am I getting paid for this? Hi, my name is Carisha Boyd. I am a parent, but also too, I am your current PAC president, your parent advisory committee president, as well as your vice president, oh, by chair of the African American Black Parent Advisory Committee. Um, first of all, I'd like to open up the, all your attention for for trustee members to come to our meetings. We as the parents, we need all the help and support we need, and that's why I'm here to address you tonight. As I've heard all these different reports, to hear any representation pertaining to, directly to the parents and the parents' concerns. Um, I don't see the Family Resource Center representative here representing us, but luckily I am here and I have a lot to say and a little bit of time. I do have some questions. Um, I noticed that twenty percent of the SR funds spent, approximately about thirty-one million, has been spent on direct services for students. Um, after the data report has come out that we've been asking for for the past couple of years since I've been a, a parent committee representative. Um, what are we, how much money do you guys plan to allocate for direct services uh, pertaining to math and literacy for the school district according to the, the updated data report? Um, we know our, our students are failing. Um, also too, when you guys get ready to go to Vegas, I'm happy and excited for you guys to take that in consideration. Um, also too, um, the high priorities um, and uh, sensory equipment for our special education, how is this being, the money being spent and who's decide where it goes? And, and is CAC involved in that decision process making? Also too, with the LCAP and LLC FF funds. Um, funds are supposed to be distributed throughout the district based on a community group collaboration. Yet we as the parents have not really participated other than making broad uh, surveys that don't answer the, the, the real detail, how the money be spent. So our question is, where's the funding going? How is it directly spent? And we need a clear-cut transparency report on where those funds are going. We've yet to receive that as parents. Makes it harder for us to make decisions when it comes to the spending of the LCAP. Um, we've gone through several superintendents where Um, we've gone through several superintendents where we have been left out of the spending. Hmm, sorry, my apologies. Also, too, as a school site representative, Honkingson Elementary, we'd like to know when are our sixth graders going to be going to science camp? I spoke to Miller in a previous meeting. Like I said, I wear many hats, so there are some things that we'd like to hear back from the school board of trustees on, as well as all the educators in the room. When you guys are making these decisions, please take in consideration the partnership you guys have with the parents, because I've yet to hear anybody state anything pertaining to that.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you.
Trustees, this concludes comments for item 16.1.
Uh, Carisha, can you send us board members when you're having your next board meeting? And then staff, can you connect with Carisha to arrange an update meeting for parents? All right, thank you. Transparency, guys, right? Accountability. Thank you. All right, we can. 10:20, five minutes over. All right, uh, meeting adjourned, 10:20. Thank you all for staying with us.
Trustees, if you guys can stay for signatures, thank you.
Maida Franco, as, as, as I wasn't allowed to speak on my, on trustee reports.
The meeting is over.
So I just wanted to ask.
The meeting is over.
I know. I wanted to ask, because of the incident that happened last week, one on my side. Can you, yes, patrol this area after the school, please? And good. The, the student who was followed for a, the guy. Can you guys do that, please? Okay, thank you so much. As I was reported that you guys only went one day to do that, to patrol. Okay, thank you.